Oh, no, but wait, we're missing.
We're missing.
No, I mean.
Well, we got a call. It's like.
I don't know.
Nothing wrong with starting.
Right side.
No, but my mics on, participate. So, mics on, mics on. Your mic is not on that chair.
No, I'm waiting for.
Okay, the camera's on is the problem. All right.
We lost our applicant, too.
Okay, good afternoon. We're back on the calendar. Back in, sorry, back in the record, thank you. Where's the zoning calendar? New cases, item number one, 11-15 BZ, 155 Dover Street, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Eric Pilatnik.
Hello.
We attended your review session yesterday, and we've heard the board's comments, and the architect should be here any minute, he was on his way. But we have a few pieces of information, I think, that might be helpful for the board in my results, and the questions from the comments you had yesterday. The first question you had pertained to the community board, the nine dissents. I'm not quite sure what the rationale was for the dissents. I don't recall. I was at the hearing myself. Sometimes there's, are segments of people who are, don't support all the applications that come in there. It was supported. That's good news for the applicant, I suppose. We wanted to, you raised the question about the inconsistency in the plans with respect to the survey and the plans. One was a mistake, one, I believe, is just a misinterpretation. The survey, which says eight-nine, is measured in, I forget the right terminology for it, the architect told me, but that's, it equates to eight feet, 11 inches.
Yes.
That's the survey. So that matches the plans at eight feet, 11 inches.
But not the site plan.
No, the site plan shows it's eight feet, 11 inches.
No. No.
The proposed site plan.
I see eight feet.
Yeah.
No, no, wait a minute.
Should.
The survey, the site plan side yards are six foot eight and six foot nine.
That's on the exist, that's my second part, you, I apologize.
Yeah.
I apologize, I wasn't clear, I apologize. There was, there were mistakes made on the existing site plan where his scale was off, and that carried through on the existing yards. We apologize for that.
This is a computer.
It was his problem on the scaling, on the existing conditions.
Yeah, 022. That sheet is really.
Yeah, on the existing, as somebody looking at.
On the existing.
Yeah, we're going to correct that to reflect the correct side yards. The other problem that was being called out was the discrepancy, discrepancy between the survey and the proposed plan. We're maintaining that eight foot 11 side yard. The survey reads eight-nine. That's a measurement of feet as compared to eight feet, 11 inches on the plan.
That we know.
So, we will correct the existing conditions plan so that the existing conditions plan accurately reflects yards. And we apologize for that error on that.
That's not, I don't think that that was the error. What the problem was, that the site plan tells you one thing with all of these completely irrelevant numbers, and that's how you start off looking at the application. And then, all of a sudden, you're in the floor plans, and it's a completely different set of numbers, and then you look at the survey, and they sort of are similar. So then you think you're going crazy.
Yes. You weren't going crazy, you were, because the existing was incorrect, but the survey and the proposed are correct. The next question the board had relates to the cellar. The cellar, we're amending the cellar's plans. So we're going to be removing from the cellar any recreation space. We're going to be removing the three-piece bathroom in its entirety from the cellar, and any portion of the cellar, the ground floor now, which will be the cellar, which is not excavated, will remain unexcavated. So there will be no excavation going on, and that should address the board's questions and concerns relating to the cellar.
Well, that's provided, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is this, did you determine whether this is going to be substantial improvement?
The architect has met with the Department of Buildings and defined that it would apply as an alteration in.
But it still could be substantial improvement.
Under the, under the appendix G.
If it's a substantial improvement, then the cellar below grade space has to be filled in. And you can't even keep the existing cellar that you have.
And you're adding a lot of new space to this building. So it might be a substantial improvement.
Right.
We'll find out the answer to that question. I don't know the answer.
And then, are you going to be lifting the existing buildings, building walls? Or are you going to, you have to wet floodproof the cellar level.
The cellar level.
Right.
I'm going to speak to the architect about it, hopefully he'll be here before the end of the hearing, and he'll be able to tell you.
And it should be floodproof materials, flood-resistant materials. So depending on what you have there now, you may have to lift and then build something new underneath.
Hopefully, the architect will be here. I'm just looking at my notes to see if I have the answer. I don't have the answer for you.
Then I noticed that the architect measured building height and perimeter wall from the first floor.
Instead of from the design flood elevation.
Correct.
He's going to be amending the plans to design it, to draw it from the design flood elevation, which will have the added benefit of reducing the total height of the building from its current height.
No, because then the design flood elevation is actually below the first floor elevation.
It's below, so.
It's below.
Correct.
So it will increase the perimeter wall height and the building height.
The way the architect was viewing it, that by dropping at the foot, he's going to be carrying the drop down on the entire building.
Oh, all right. Okay.
It'll be lowering the whole building down by one foot. That segues into a conversation that the board had yesterday, I think, which was one of the overriding concerns of the board, which is the total height of the building.
Yeah.
So we've looked at ways through the evening last evening. Up, there's Artur right now. You can grab a seat right in front of him. The architect just came in. So with respect to the height, we looked at ways to try to cut the height, and we could take height off various portions of the building. The first floor at 13 feet is a very luxurious floor-to-ceiling height on the first floor, which is what obviously the owner was trying to achieve. But we were looking at taking off perhaps eight or nine inches from that floor and taking off another eight or nine inches from the second floor. Between those two being taken off, which would be about a foot and a half, between a foot and a half and two feet, as well as the drop in height from the foot, from the design flood elevation that we just spoke about, we were hoping the board would be much more comfortable with that. We'd be dropping the height of the building between two feet and inches and three feet. The reason we're making the request to the board, and I know we've had this conversation in other applications, is by losing the cellar space, you're really trying to capture it up in other spaces. And the attic space would be a great place for us to recapture it. The attic is nine feet, six inches at the third floor level, or the attic level. So there's not much room to take from that floor.
As far as the attic is concerned, R31 is strict in terms of what permitted obstructions are to exceed the envelope, and the way I see it, those four, that flat roof would penetrate the allowable envelope.
When you come up and speak, I'll be, you need to jab at it.
I don't see the.
Just speaking now about the height.
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Artur Kisel. I'm a filing representative on this job, and I do all filing building department, and the office.
You're the, sorry, you're the filing representative?
Yes.
Or you're the design architect?
Oh, I'm a filing representative and design, the office architect by designer.
Okay.
Okay. On this is front elevations, it's look like flat roof. In, if you're looking on the cross-sections, we have pitch roof, like one foot by three and a half inches slope. And this is really minimized flat roof we can build by zoning. It just, front elevation show flat roof because it's easy to drawings.
Well, I'm looking at like page A215, and what you have labeled as dormers.
Dormers, dormers in zone R3, it's allowed.
I don't believe so. Double check, please.
R32, dormers is.
This is R31.
R31, yes. It's dormers, it's obstructions, yeah.
Okay.
I don't remember.
I'll double check, but I don't believe so. I think the only permitted obstructions are chimneys, things of that sort.
It's a lot, lot of, like flagpoles, parapets.
No, yeah, but R31, it's limited. In Manhattan Beach, it's limited.
Ah, in Manhattan Beach, I need to check in Manhattan Beach, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
It's a little tight there, never mind.
Yeah.
You know what, you know what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, that, that, that'll be something you have to look at.
Yeah, yeah, for dormer, I will be looking, and for the pitch roof, we have not flat, we have pitch, like by zoning.
There's a slight pitch, but there's still portions that pop out of the envelope.
Ah, this is like called like, like design make like dormers, yeah. It's, we do like just curve design and comment for the dormers. Dormers not allowed, yeah, you know, but what.
Okay, yeah, double check that, please.
Yeah, double check is dormers.
And then, your first floor is more than five feet above the curb level. So you need to have one of those mitigation measures.
Eric, Eric Pilatnik, there was also the question that, if I may raise back over the board now, the markers here, are we lifting, the question was, are we lifting the house or are we maintaining existing?
No, we, we existing, yeah, we don't lift them because already have this height by, by a survey, by professional survey.
So you're just going to build another first floor on top of the existing?
Yeah, like we leave the walls, like more than 50% walls, like by zoning, and just reinforcement, change the design of the window.
Well, you just have to make sure that anything below the design flood elevation is water-resistant material.
Ah, of course.
It can't be wood or sheet, it's got to be, you know, masonry, concrete.
Yeah, yeah, of course, it's no problem.
Just to clarify, on the dormers, they're not permitted.
They're not permitted obstructions in R31.
No, in an R3, under 23621, dormers are not permitted. So the only thing that is, is a permitted obstruction are chimneys, exterior wall thickness, flagpoles, or aerials, parapet walls, roof thicknesses, skylights, solar energy systems.
Okay.
That really affects your design concept.
Yeah, yes.
You're like a giant.
It will affect design, but.
Collection of dormers.
Yeah, it will affect, but we're making to do something.
Wow, that's the baroque.
Oh, so you know about the mitigation measure?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We spoke yesterday.
All right, okay. And then I had a question about the parking space. Also regarding the parking, it's only permitted in the front yard if you're leading to a driveway or a garage beyond. So one parking space that you show is okay, but the other one, you have to take out.
Yeah, we take out, I send new drawings to.
Oh, okay.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
With regards to reducing the building height, you mentioned that you would take few inches from the first and the second floor.
Yes.
The question is, that would it still be considered an enlargement? Because, I mean, how would the floors, the height of the floors be reduced? The existing floor heights are going to, if this is an existing building, an existing floor height is going to be reduced.
No, not the existing, the proposed floor.
Of course, yeah.
He may be.
His proposed floor.
Keeping the first floor and lift, and adding another floor on top to raise the first floor level, but I'm not sure he's keeping the second floor.
Yeah, we keeping second floor, yeah.
But then you have to raise that also.
You're, what?
Not raise that, it's just down.
Sorry. Say again? Yeah, I'm not understanding that either. You're raising the floor up, yes?
Yeah, yeah.
On the first floor only, but you're keeping the position of the second floor joists where they are. You're not moving those. So your floor-to-floor height on the first floor is?
It's 11 minus like 14 inches for the beams. It's like 11, eight, 11, six.
Well, right now, he has 12 feet between the first floor and the second floor.
Yeah, 12, 12 feet, yeah.
It's a lot of space.
So it'll, that will be reduced because he's going to build on top of his first foot, existing first floor.
Right. What is it, two and a half feet you have to lift it? Or?
No, we can take from the first floor, we can lift down like one foot, and attic floor, we can go like.
Well, the first floor is kind of set because of the flood elevation.
No, no, we don't touch floor of the first floor. We leave the same elevations.
What?
But ceiling joists between our first floor and second floor, we can move down.
Wait, aren't, no, I'm confused. You have an existing house, which you need to maintain in order to make this an enlargement, right?
Yeah.
So if you're physically lifting the first floor, aren't you lifting the first floor?
Two and a half feet.
Two and a half feet to make, clear your design flood elevation, right? You're lifting it. So then, you'd be lifting it along with your second floor and your roof.
No, he said he wasn't going to move anything, he was just going to add another floor on top. So he's going to reduce.
We don't touch first floor elevation, we don't touch it. We don't touch it, first floor elevation at all.
But you have to.
I don't understand.
The elevation of the first floor right now is 11.34 feet. You have, you're proposing to make it 13.84 in order to take it above the flood plane.
Right.
That's your increase, you know, you're, either you're adding another floor on top of the existing with new joists, add a new floor?
I think that's.
Or you're physically lifting it. No, 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 the first floor, you also have to lift. You have to change.
You're not just adding height, you have, it has to be the bottom of the structure has to be above base flood, right? So you can't leave the structure there, you've got to lift the bottom of the structure.
If it's steel, or if whatever it is, it could be.
Just left, but it's not.
But it can't be.
It's wood frame. But he's saying what he thought he'd do was simply build on top of it, and he can't do that. Now, I hope. Because it's a wood.
It's a wood frame. Unless he replaces the joists.
Right, so wait, so you, so you have to be lifting your structure, your first floor structure up so that the bottom of the beam clears the base flood elevation, right?
Yeah.
Your base flood is 11.
The elevation is like 13.0, and first floor elevations, floor 13.84.
Right.
Just we above deep elevation, like nine, 10 inches.
So you're lifting up the first floor, you have to.
We can, but not so much, like four, five inches, we can edit concrete or whatever.
Not according to what you're showing on the plans?
Ah, because.
You're showing the existing first floor is 11.34, right? And the proposed first floor is 13.84, which is a difference of two and a half feet.
Yeah.
Well, you have to think about all these things. I mean, you have to design accordingly.
And in addition to which, because, well.
Ah, yeah, 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 because I don't remember about existing pitch, yeah.
Okay. So, all right, so now that we've got that clear, right? We're lifting up the first floor, right? But above the first floor, you've got, you have to retain walls to be an existing building, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, what's going on on the second floor?
We just need to lift second floor.
As is. Are you leaving it where it is in the existing?
No, we cannot.
Are you lifting up the entire structure, like basically jacking up the structure?
Yeah, we can, we can jack an whole structural board.
Okay, is that what you're doing? You're jacking the structure?
Yeah.
And then you're leaving the second floor, therefore, as is relative to, let's say, its original relationship to the first floor, right?
Yeah.
So the first floor is going to go up by two feet, which means your second floor will only be 10 feet floor-to-ceiling, or something like that, right?
Yeah.
Is that what you're going to do?
Yeah, we can do this.
Because you got a 12 feet, 12-foot floor-to-floor height right now between your first and your second floor.
Mm-hmm, minus.
Minus the lifting up the two, no, no, yeah. Then, then, you're going to lift it up something like two, what is it, two and a half feet?
Two and a half feet.
So now, you're minus 12 inches, so it's really three and a half from the floor-to-floor. So that's pretty low first floor.
Nine foot will be.
Okay, so are you good with that? Is that what's going to happen?
Maybe it's over, yeah.
Okay, so you need to clarify that, because what we're trying to do is make, bring the building height down, so to the extent that you can refine these floor-to-floor heights and get us a lower height where you still have occupiable rooms? Because at the moment, you have, how high is your, hold on a second. Because you're showing a 13-foot first floor on your proposal, which wouldn't be the case unless you remove the second floor entirely and relocate your joists, in which case, what happened to the floor area? You need, so the thing here is that this needs to be an enlargement. So you must retain a certain amount of floor area, that's opposing walls, right?
Existing floor area, yeah, it's supposed to be stayed, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I think it means going back and looking at that. Okay. And it's going to be affected by your, well, the attic's going to be affected by your dormer rule, right? Attic plan.
Yeah, it will be redesigned, all second, all attic floor, yeah.
And then, if we look at the first floor, so if I look at your first floor plan also, it looks to me that what you're doing, unless it's not what you're doing, is you're retaining sort of these two, almost two entire sides of the building. So your joists actually don't run that way, most that I know of, run perpendicular to the wall, not diagonal to the wall.
Oh.
So I'm not seeing how you're retaining floor area.
In the middle of the house, we have like, on basement, we have like two line of the columns, beams run parallel of the front of the wall. And we stay this first floor and just edit on the side of the building. We have just additional on the side.
Where do you have columns?
We have columns, if you ask about how run the floor joists, floor joists run parallel of the front of the house.
Mm-hmm.
But in the middle of the basement, have the steel column, round columns, hold it wood beams and floor joists in this.
That's just at the basement level?
It's basement level.
What about the first floor?
First floor have like bearing wall on top on, this is steel column, and.
It does? Where?
Hold it like on bearing walls, no steel columns coming from the first floor to second.
So running, the joists are running parallel to the front, right?
Yeah, just to the front, yeah.
So, so are your, where are your beams resting? You have columns, and you don't show any, that's why I'm asking.
But on this is plan, I didn't show any structures, only plan of the building department show structural as a goal, because.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So here's the thing, I'm trying to understand this. So the problem is that if you don't retain floor area, you're not entitled to this special permit. And what it looks like is you're demolishing your opposing walls, so you're not retaining the floor area, because you have to look up the definition of floor area and building.
No, no, yeah.
Right, okay? So, so far, it looks like it's mostly a demolition job, and it can't be to qualify for this special permit. So you should work with Eric, and he knows what the parameters of the permit are.
Of course, Eric Pilatnik, just for the record. I'm drawing Z006. He gives you the calculations of what he's maintaining.
No, it's here, the populations.
And also on Z005.
Z006.
We have all population of these walls.
Which is the first and second floor plan.
Sorry.
So there might be a way that we could better present it.
Hold on a second, I want to go to 006 and 5.
It's the first floor and the second floor plan, and we're showing that the first floor we're removing 47.3% of the floor.
Yeah, but I, I don't know what, I frankly don't understand what these things are supposed to mean. It's, it's a definition is floor area. What, what is this? What are these calculations representing?
Floor area, whatever percentage floor area existing and additional new area.
So, all right, well, okay, the, I'll give you that the drawing shows existing floor area, but then you have to retain it before you add to it. So those drawings, to me, say you had floor area, 1,600 square feet on that floor, but now you're taking down two of the walls, so what happened to the floor area? It's basically demolition. I don't get how that's a retention of floor area.
I think our concern is, while the plan indicates where the existing footprint of the building was and where the additional footprint is being made, that this plan explained. However, it's not quite clear to how structurally the existing building footprint is going to be retained with all these other rejiggering above the walls and everything that's going on to ensure the, it maintains the true intent of this special permit.
Right, and now, we're all very cognizant of the maintenance of the floor area. We tried to show you with the calculations that we, we gave on the pages, we tried to show you what's being maintained. If I'm understanding the question correctly, though, it's that as the floors move up and down, is that the question, that the maintenance of the floors as they slide?
Well, that's another one.
Down and all of this.
But it's also.
Yeah, it's.
So the simple one is, which we see in lots of applications, it's the simplest one, you have opposing walls. There's the joist resting on that wall, and then there's the other end of the joist resting on the other wall, and because the joists are resting on two exterior walls, those two exterior walls encompass floor area. But when the joists don't run diagonally like the hatches do on this drawing, then you don't have anything to hold up your floor area.
I understand you right now, what's going on.
Okay.
Okay, if you remove the walls, we just put columns and hold existing joints by steel beams. And whatever five feet extension, we just extended five foot of floor joists. So when.
Is that an enlargement? No, he's got to keep the wall. See, that's the thing. It's, so what, what you're doing basically is you're keeping two walls.
We keeping 50% wall.
You're keeping 50% of the perimeter wall. Not really, because that little first floor extension.
But on the bottom, this is wall, on the first floor, you see, we keeping this wall in first floor area.
You're keeping the entire cellar wall, all the existing cellar walls, so they'll keep all the.
But that's not floor area, that's a cellar.
Well, they're keeping the first floor joist resting on those cellar walls.
That's also not floor area, that's the floor, that's the, basically the ceiling of the cellar, that's a floor. That doesn't make floor area till you enclose it.
And then they're keeping 50% of the first floor walls.
But they're not.
Or over, over 50%.
No, but walls on the first floor between backyard wall, we keeping, we don't touch it, coming inside the roof. You can see on the plan, it's like empty wall, it's on the A111, it's we don't demolish the wall at all.
How do we? Yeah, all right, rather than belaboring this, we have a, we have a structural, I think what I need Eric to do is to collect.
Structural, yeah, it's a problem.
No, it's a structural problem about the definition of floor area. So what I need you to do is look at the definition of building, the definition of an enlargement, and the definition of floor area. As soon as you remove the things that define a building or define floor area to the point where you don't have those anymore, you're no longer an enlargement. You're no longer a building being enlarged.
Right, but what are we removing? We're maintaining the floor joists, we're retaining the floor.
You're not retaining the floor joists, because as soon as you remove the end walls, the joists don't have anything defining space.
But he's going to be putting steel in place to jack to hold it.
We put the column and steel beams. It doesn't care.
This is, this is an atypical kind of situation. Mostly, we see an opposing wall retained, and we're not seeing any opposing walls retained. That's what's making this so hard. And it doesn't actually have to be, as the way I understand it, that much opposing walls. It's supposed to be 25% of the floor, existing floor area of the building, that's what falls you into a total demolition, right? When you have a total demolition where you're losing your non-complying condition status?
No, we understand.
Right? You've removed 25% of the, 75% of the floor area, right? But here, I don't see what's holding the floor area in.
Just I can bring the structural beams.
Right? You see what I mean?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
In the first floor, I see like piece of wall, we have like existing, we have existing piece of wall, like middle. We just remove like 15-foot walls and 15-foot, if look on page A111, we just remove like 15-foot walls, we can support any wood beams, not steel beams.
So I guess the best example, I think it's like, we talk about the floor area leaking out.
Yeah.
So floor area is contained. It's described as having floors or roof and walls, right? When you measure floor area, it's to the exterior walls of a building, otherwise you don't know how to measure it. And otherwise, it like leaks out the walls if you don't have any. So I think you need to look at this project and figure out how to get us to have floor area between opposing walls, as opposed to flying joists.
That's where I'm confused by. What is the distinction, the distinction that seems to be made by the board, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that usually you have the opposing walls?
Yeah.
And now you've got perpendicular walls that are being maintained.
Right. And with nothing, with the joists flying in midair, with nothing to make the existing building still be an existing building.
If you're maintaining it all during the construction process, though, with new steel, as he's explaining, new columns, for lack of a better word, supporting.
That's just temporary, you're not gonna use those columns for.
No.
No, you're not. You're gonna take them away as soon as you have a bearing wall.
No.
Right?
Can I, can I draw something?
You can't draw it now, we can explain. We wish we had.
Okay. We have wall. No, no, it's.
If you draw it, you want.
Oh, that's a whiteboard?
There is a whiteboard.
I didn't even know.
Yes.
Let's see if that erases.
Take the microphone, speak into the microphone.
Okay.
Speak into the microphone.
Right?
Okay. We, we have, this is a square building.
This, otherwise.
And floor joists having this wall. We just make opening on this is wall, this is stay, and we make opening this wall and make all this opening. We just put steel beams from this point to this point to hold it, this is.
Yeah, I understand that you can temporarily hold up the joists.
No, this is not temporary, this is like forever, this is like, put the steel beams, build new foundation, like five foot on the plan, we build foundation, but we have like this foundation. And we built new walls in here, and we extend floor joists from the steel beam.
Right.
And this all stays the same, steel beams stay in the floor. And all these things, we don't go to this area, we just remove this wall and steel beam stay, and some column we put.
Okay. Right, I understand, we understand this.
I mean, the physical and structural way you're going to do it is one thing, but the definition of floor area is enclosed floor. And once you unenclose it, it stops being floor area and therefore it's not an enlargement. I mean, that's the way, if you read the.
But the board has seen hundreds of applications where walls are coming down off the sides of buildings.
Right.
And portions of floors are coming out. And it's, for moments in time, they're not enclosed.
Well, usually, we base it upon whether or not it fit into the definition of an alteration versus a new building.
Right, that's what we're talking about. So we're looking at.
And we didn't look at, you know, we looked at keeping more than 50% of the walls on a particular floor and.
But what's that?
Not necessarily keeping the enclosed floor area.
What's the 50% come from?
From the TPPN, from the Buildings Department.
Which I thought now, I thought we abandoned that relationship because they're not the ones who decide whether it's an alteration or enlargement, right? Because that has to do with whether you.
Historically, this is all correct, it has not been defined 100% according to the Department of Buildings memorandum.
Right.
But there has been the ongoing discussions and applications where we've come in with designs, if not exactly like this, similar to this, where for moments in time, portions of the home are coming down, being exposed to the, to the outside world, dripping out, as you may call it, or oozing out.
Leaking.
Leaking, leaking out, not spontaneously combusting, hopefully. And we've been building temporary or permanent supports around it and then re-enclosing. I don't see why that's changing here, just because the different wall that we're pulling out.
It's almost like every time we've modified a side yard, this situation happens.
Right, but when we modify side yard, most of the time that I've been seeing, anyway, and that we've been insisting on, is that we have opposing walls. Because in fact, we don't modify the side yard most of the time, it's continuation of the existing side yard. And most of the time, we also see them retain at least the opposing walls this way or this way, as they remove a piece of the building. And they don't remove the whole thing. And the critical number is 25%. So you don't need, the way I read the zoning resolution, as soon as you remove more than 75% of the floor area of a building, you lose your non-complying status, right? So that means that then you're a development, not an enlargement. So that's the zoning resolutions instructions about when you constitute an existing building to be enlarged. And I don't understand this.
Would it be helpful if Eric, you found other situations that look?
Well, to explain it, maybe.
Yeah, maybe the rationale.
It's not so much the other.
We brought other larger sites, other 60-foot wide lots that have had smaller homes on it, where the homes have been enlarged laterally.
Mm-hmm.
And there have been other cases in this, I mean, I can't, I can think of a couple in my head right now.
I'd like to understand the rationale because I'm frankly lost, you know? It seems like it's an invention of a new term for what constitutes an existing building, and I need to understand it.
All right. It's fair enough, we can give you some more information.
Okay. Okay. And like, yeah, what's the rationale? The rationale behind it from the point of view of the zoning resolution, right?
Well, we have every, like, we've been saying the whole way through, we have every intent of meeting the 50% maintenance of.
Yeah, but I don't know where 50% comes from, is what I'm saying. Where does the zoning resolution instruct, give you those instructions?
That's been, the zoning resolution, this subject is not defined within the zoning resolution, and obviously, it's taken on a life of its own through board actions for the past 18 years already. But the way that we've been presenting the cases to the board for the past six or seven years, including under this board, is with the calculations that we gave you on this plan, showing you the perimeter walls that are being maintained, documenting that we're maintaining 50% of the floors and the walls, and using that calculation to support the finding that we're meeting 50%. If you look at probably every application that you've acted on, they all have the same calculation on them, every one has the 50% on them.
They don't, actually. Most of them just show dash lines.
Oh, really? They don't actually, they don't even give you the calculations?
They don't do much.
So here, we're a little bit ahead of the game, I guess, by giving you some calculations. So we're getting a little bit, glad to hear, we're giving you something more than you used to see. Let us go back and try and give you some other applications that the board has acted on in the past. We'll speak with your examiner, I know Mr. Segovia's seen quite a few of these, and he'll help refresh our memories on ones that we made this.
Okay. So if we could just get to like, I mean, that's a threshold question, but the substantive questions are about the massiveness of the house?
Yeah, if we could just get your direction on that, a little bit on the height, so when we come back to you with the redesigned home, meaning you're.
Well, some of it is height mass, some of it is width mass, so part of it is, the proposal is to take advan, it's, I know that it's permitted under the zoning to expand the width of the house, but it's also because the house is so massive, wider and taller compared to its neighbors, you really need to think about, you need to, the question has to do with neighborhood context. And looking on that block, on the two sides of the street, what else are you seeing that is within the range of what you're talking about?
Well, we're actually, you know, if you look at the houses on the block, we're fully complying side yards, which.
No, I know your side yards are complying, I'm not asking them.
I get the impact it's having. The five-foot side yard, which I think is really where I think we could address that for the board, we had had discussions of taking two feet off of that side and encroaching it to a, reducing it to a seven-foot side yard.
Mm-hmm.
Or increasing it, reducing the size of the home, increasing the side yard to seven feet. And as we discussed originally with Arthur at the beginning of the hearing, we were thinking for the height of taking off, first, you get the foot off from the design flood elevation, and then we were thinking of taking another two feet off the height of the building. So by taking, going with that is our, sort of our vision, if it's acceptable to the board, that's what Arthur is gonna go back and try and design within those.
Okay, so I think you should look at that, it's, we can't really imagine until we see it, right? But the whole idea is to try to sort of tone this down so it fits more within the neighborhood character.
We understand, and we think we can do that, we have room to play with on that.
Okay.
And then we'll give you information to show you what the board has done in other situations where you've kept the perpendicular walls, that have in other instances.
Good, thank you. And then there was a question about the pool and whether it complies with the pool construction regulations?
Yeah, because there was, for me, it was unclear between the survey and the site plan and the plan itself, A, what your dimension was in the rear yard, and then B, whether or not the pool complies. Your plan says you've got five feet on either side, and then you've got this, I guess it's a four-foot, the, we all know about the four-footies in the rear of these buildings. But it wasn't clear to me from the survey and the site plan whether, because I think your rear yard is listed as two different numbers, so you just need to clear that up. But also make sure that, yeah, you do have enough space from the rear of the building to the pool, and you, I think you also have to have an enclosure, right? So can you just make sure that? Right, but you also, don't you also need a fence at one point?
There is a.
Is it shown?
Yeah, six-foot fence, show the six-foot fence around, but not on this joint, the department joints, we go.
Around the pool, right?
Around the pool.
Yeah. Oh, around the pool itself? I thought you were counting on.
No, you have to be fenced, you have to have a fenced portion of the pool, and I don't think you do.
No, no.
The yard is fenced.
Perimeter walls, perimeter property walls, six-foot, and close to gates.
At the rear of the home on both sides before the one-story protrusion.
Just take a look at the pool regulation, make sure that you've complied.
Is this an in-ground pool?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that permitted in all of this?
Yeah.
See, they show a fence like this.
Yeah.
There's a fence there. Isn't that allowed? You have a fence there, you have a gate there, and then a fence all the way around. Closer to the pool.
We'll also put a note on the plans, we're not, of course, we're not looking to your board for any authorization on the pool. If that helps alleviate any burden. The pool's a grade. But we're not, you know, we'll put a note.
You've got doors that feed right out onto that pool deck?
From that little one-story extension?
Yeah, so, and that's all, right, so your door presumably is, you've got a 36-inch door. I suppose, I've now just obstructed most of my ability to walk around the pool, I, you know, little kid, running, bang, into the pool, dead. So could you take a look and make sure?
It's the whole reason why I don't have a pool in my own home, but that's another story.
Just take a look and make sure that you're complying, thank you.
Yeah, if you just take a look for a second. The door is not in the rear, the portion you're talking about, the door exits, if you look at the floor plans, from the left and the right of the deck.
No. Those are swinging, the one-story rear enlargement has doors or windows swinging all the way out onto the deck.
These are the doors, right?
Right.
No, the doors are on the left and the right side of the home, they're not in the middle.
Oh, before the gate?
Before the gate?
Before the gate. No, the door is after the gate. Door opens into the rear yard.
I mean, yeah, in other words, it opens to the point where the gate prevents you from entering the rear yard?
Well, the gate is at the end of the two-story or three-story portion of the home, and then the gate is, well, you can see.
Yeah, okay, so it is, all right, so.
But I think.
No, you're inside the gates, that's the.
Yeah, you're in the rear yard.
So it means any, so the point is, you're supposed to be protecting the little kid, right? So the little kid can exit from that one-story extension right onto the grassy area.
Well, I see your concern.
That is the pool.
We'll see, I see your concern. I don't know if there's, if there's any prohibition.
We try to.
Yeah, we'll put the gate there if we have to. I don't know if there's a prohibition on whether the house is allowed to open, if the area is just set to be protected from outsiders, or if the area needs to be protected.
I think it's for children in general.
From inside. But we'll find out, and whatever it is, we'll put the gate there.
Children open door or gate, it's for children, doesn't matter.
Yeah, because it appears that that entire area opens up. That's what it looks like? I don't know what you are.
It's not, either way, we can move the gate back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's, we can move the gate back, that's an easy thing.
Okay, check the code on that, that's all. All right.
All right. You've given us enough guidance, I think, if I could just summarize for the board, I think that the discussion we had at the beginning was whether or not it's a substantial improvement, and to confirm that it's not a substantial improvement, so that we keep the cellar. We're going to remove the dormers, because we've established that the dormers are not allowed. We're going to add the design flood elements, we're gonna eliminate one parking space in the front yard.
You're gonna remove all of the work in the cellar, the new work in the cellar?
We're gonna remove all the work in the cellar. We're going to clarify what we're doing at the first floor level as far as raising it goes, and at the same time, we're gonna do it at the second floor. We're gonna lower the height of the structure in its entirety by approximately three feet. We are going to look to other applications that the board has acted on in the past that have had perpendicular maintenance of walls to establish the fact that that's been acceptable to the board. We're going to take two feet off the right side of the home, off the right side side yard, we're gonna enlarge the side yard by two feet, reduce the home by two feet. We clarify the rear yard dimensions, this was discussed with Vice Chair Hinkson, and we will confirm the legality of the pool and its fencing.
Great.
So hopefully, we'll come back to you with all of that.
One more thing, you'll just correct the statement of facts and findings, page four.
Yes, yes, that was, we apologize for that, we know about that.
Lowest occupiable floor.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll fix that.
Okay. Great, okay.
All right, we understand where the board is going.
Are there any speakers? Yes, there's a speaker here, thank you.
Madam Chair, as I indicated in my testimony that I.
State your name.
I'm sorry, Judith Barron, Manana Beach Community Group, I'm an affected homeowner, I live around the corner, and I have a little bit of laryngitis, I apologize. As I said in my testimony, which I presented to the board over the weekend, and I apologize for it being late, I'm not gonna read everything that I wrote here, because you've covered so much of it, and we have not had an opportunity in the beach to take a look at this proposal, although we know intrinsically inside our hearts that it's absolutely wrong and not, it's just too big. It doesn't fit into the character of the community, although Mr. Palatnik will tell you that it does. The difference is that this is now, and whatever happened before this is then, because Sandy changed everything in our community. We lost trees, we lost shrubs, we lost everything, many of us lost everything, we even lost a poor soul in our community as a result of the storm. And so whatever goes on now is new, because this board is gonna be looking at this with a new eye, not what happened before, not what was proposed before, not the walls that were put in before, not the walls that were taken out before, the things that weren't done before. This is brand new, because it's a flood zone. We're in an AE zone, every time it rains, this weekend we'll have a problem. Two weeks ago, we had flooding, we had major problems. I'm gonna put my testimony in, I hope you'll take the time to read it. I'm gonna put some testimony in that some of my neighbors sent to me one yesterday, one this morning, they refused to sign it because they don't want any trouble from a new resident and a new neighbor. The community group has been before this board, and many of you who know me have seen me, I haven't been back in three years, because we weren't getting any satisfaction about the fact that our properties, the properties were using wall-to-wall dimensions. We need to have grass, we need to have driveways, we need to have backyards. I ventured to say that there probably is a wall, as my neighbor did, who had a BSA special permit, and put the wall right on the easement, and when that goes down hard enough, when there's enough flooding and everything else, those of us that are hooked up to that easement with sewers are going to have a major problem. So I'm not going to belabor the point. I do want to say that whatever went on in the past with Board of Standards and Appeals special permits, not every single one of them were adhered to. If you put a caveat on the end of your resolution and say this must be fixed, a 21-foot perimeter wall, those walls are still there, nobody checks. The Buildings Department doesn't check. I assume you don't have the ability to come out and check. We complain about it, and nothing happens. And then attorneys such as Mr. Pilatnik use those as standards for the next one that comes up. So if, we would like now to have copies of what goes in. Community Board did not get the new, whatever, whatever he's put in since the one the Community Board voted on. We didn't see it, they didn't see it, I called them, they don't have the new plans. So if they're going to get new plans, I would, I would appreciate getting a copy of the new plans, or at least the new dialogue, so that we could at least look at it in a constructive kind of way. We're not saying don't build. Everybody has to build, and this house is an old house. So I'm not going to belabor the point with my testimony. We took a lot of time, a few of us writing it. I'm going to leave it with you, I'm going to leave you all of the other things that were given to me, and I would like to be informed from, for the community group and myself as well. The Community Board needs to be informed, and I think the question came up as to why the nine people voted against it. They had hell of a good reasons. I would like to ask you to explain to me perhaps why that basement has to remain there, and why it's not being filled in, when Appendix G is telling everybody in the world accepting this area with a special permit, that you don't have to, that you do have to fill it in, that you have to backfill the basements. We don't understand it. If there's a basement, and a first floor, and a second floor, and an attic, we have a four-story building, and that's not a part of an R-3-1 zone, we're one and two-family homes without fourth floors, I'm happy to hear that you're reducing the size, but I don't know how else to put it, other than the fact I am grateful to hear you today asking all these questions. We would really like to see all of the results of your investigation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know who needs to get all this.
I'll give it to Tony.
Eric Pilatnik, we'll copy Ms. Barron, we have her information, we'll copy her and everything, and of course, the Community Board will get a copy, and we'll respond to all the questions that were raised.
Okay, perfect. Are there any other speakers? I don't know if there are. Okay, so you need some time to do this.
How much time do you need, Arthur? Do we have a minute or so? Yeah? We can submit in three weeks.
Were we looking like on the 12th, is that the way?
Yeah, the 12th would be fine.
12th, okay.
It's took a while, but it's not.
Yeah, right. So that would be submission on March 23rd? That works, right?
That's good.
For an April 12th hearing.
That's fine. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Item number 26715VZ, 338 West 23rd Street, Manhattan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Frank Angelino, on behalf of the Cell Theater, 338 West 23rd Street, Manhattan, Cell Theater, it's a non-for-profit, 501(c)(3) theater, which is on the ground floor. According to the CFO, it's listed as the basement floor of the building. With me today to respond to some of the questions that, all of the questions hopefully that you had yesterday, are Alan Manaturian, who together with his wife, Nancy Manaturian, are the owners of the building, also the owners of the theaters, and it's been a labor of love for both of them, and also with us is Peter Mullin, who is the architect, and we will go through the various questions that you have raised. There are some discrepancies on the, or inconsistencies. We show on the plans 56 persons, movable seating in the theater. We are not to exceed, including with performers and office personnel, 74 persons, and that's been the basic intention of the application. The application is being made under Section 73201, the zoning resolution, which is one of the original 1961 special permits granted to the Board of Standards and Appeals to consider a theater. It anticipates a theater of up to 500 people and movie theaters in a C1 district. We are in a C1 district, but are considerably less than the 500 persons. I know that you had a number of questions, and I, we're prepared to answer them with Peter and Alan, in whatever order you want to.
Okay. Was there a Community Board recommendation? I don't think we saw that.
There is, I mean, I checked yesterday with your examiner, he said he has it. There was a Community Board recommendation in May of 2015.
Okay, and we did see that there was notice to the neighbors?
There was notice to the neighbors, and there was responses from two of the neighbors immediately to our east, at 336, gave in a consent, and the Penn South Houses Mutual Redevelopment Company, directly across the street, the seven-block-long project from 23rd Street, West 23rd to West 30th Street, has also given a consent.
Okay. Do you want to go through the questions, or?
Yeah, I guess the first one is about why were we called a, why are we referring to it as a basement? And the reason for that, and Peter can explain that better, is in consultation with his co-consultant, since the space is listed as a basement in a 1922 CFO, we are consistent with that, but at the end of the day, we will call it by its right name, which is a ground floor space. It is not a basement, it's a grade level.
So if, when you file, you're going to call it first floor?
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Peter Mullin, Mullin Palabatty Architects. Yes, when we file this, we will, excuse me, when we file this, we'll be changing, hopefully, the certificate of occupancy to illustrate the special permit and have it indicate that it is a ground floor or first floor, not a basement.
Okay, so I think you actually need to show that on the submitted plans as well, because you can show existing condition, it's called a basement, and the proposed condition, it's called a first floor? Because otherwise, you'll have trouble at the Buildings Department, they'll say, wait a minute, you're, even the designations of the floors are different, and you'll end up coming back here for a substantial compliance letter, or I don't know what. Okay, so you, you just want everything to look the same between the two sets, okay?
Will do. There was a, a number of operational questions that were raised about ticket-taking, and again, this is a, an evolved space that started in 2007 from a very small performance space, and it's basically retained that characteristic. It is not a theater in the conventional setting, it's for poetry readings, et cetera. Alan Manaturian can better explain it, since he has thorough familiarity with all of the performances that have taken place. Alan, if you could just describe this.
Hi there, I'm Alan Manaturian. My wife Nancy and I bought this townhouse about eight years ago. The idea on the first floor was to transfer from what was a photo gallery at the time into a space where aspiring artists could come and, and show their talents, show their writing, show their acting ability. We do everything from poetry readings to comics to a jazz night. We have theater readings, and we've even had an opera performed in the space. So it's basically people who have yet to reach Broadway, or even to reach Off-Broadway, and they come, and we have different nights where they can come and perform or read what they're, what they've written, and get an audience to react and give them feedback. We usually, we aspire to having 40 people there on any given night, most nights it's more like 20, but it's a non-for-profit, we get donations from family and friends. We have a budget that probably has not yet exceeded $350,000, but that's a lot for us, and we hope to keep growing and getting people to come and see what our neighbors and talented people around can do. Tickets are inexpensive, to say the least. Some people come in and can't afford the ticket, and they walk right in free. Most shows are $10. There have been a couple that were very successful, and we raised the prices up to $20. But other than that, it's an inexpensive evening to come and see what's going on with your neighbors. There's a, one night every month where there's something called the Blackboard Series, where a lot of black artists come, and they've written short stories, or poems, or theater pieces, they get to read and get feedback. We have another night that we have in conjunction with an Irish writing group, they come in and do the same sort of thing, and we're open to people who just come in off the street and want to show their wares, or show their artwork even. We even sometimes hang people's artwork on the wall, so that they can, you know, while the performance is being done, people can see what, what kind of artists live in the neighborhood or come and visit us. As I said, we don't really get big crowds yet. When you have a ticket, most of the tickets are sold on something called Brown Bag, which is an onsite, is an internet site that you can buy your tickets ahead of time, and people come in the, the front door and turn right, and about 10 spaces, there's some, there's a checklist, and people, someone's sitting there usually just to check your name off. We open the doors a half hour before any performance, so that we mitigate any problem of people standing around outside or lines outside. Of course, sometimes we find people outside waiting for a date or something like that, but other than that, you come in half hour before the show and come in and sit down, and walk around, look around, see the space, maybe meet some of the people on staff, but we'll try to explain what else we do there.
So is there, like, a table set up where people are buying?
There's either a podium or a small table, depending on what the performance is. When you come in, you turn right, probably about 15 feet to your right, there'll be someone sitting there, it's behind the seating for the, for the experience, whatever that might be, and you have to walk around and buy this person to, to make sure that you've either paid or you have a good explanation why you haven't.
Okay, so, and that is at the stage area, or is it the back?
That is in the hall, no, that is at the, at the front of the space, which is by the front door and by the windows. You come by, and the stage is usually set up at the opposite end, which is the south end of the building. There are times when we have smaller groups that we sometimes set up on the east side of the building and turn the seats around a little bit, but that's for a different purpose.
Okay, and so even though it's a pretty small area in the front of the building inside, you're saying that when people are coming to pay, you wish there were more people, but there actually aren't?
Yes, we do. You're all invited.
Okay. Okay, I guess other questions, there were like, kind of operational questions, because it's such a small space. So first of all, how does it work with the, with the toilets? You're in the middle of a performance, and then someone in the audience, you know?
Excuse me? There are two bathrooms on the first floor.
Right.
They are on the south end, which is almost like backstage, behind where the performances are usually done. But before every show, and 10 minutes before every show, there's always an announcement, making sure people understand where the bathrooms are, and pleased to use them now. There will, there's usually an intermission, and they'll know about that also. It's not uncommon sometimes for someone who gets up and just walks along the side and passes by the, the performers and, or the reader, whoever the case may be, and needs to go to the bathroom.
Okay. And then how about the use of your rear yard? Like, what is that, how is that used?
The rear yard we originally built and, and have landscaped, it's, it's 46 feet deep by 25 feet wide, it's a large space. It has seating, and we originally developed it because we thought it would be a nice place for people to sit during intermissions, or to go outdoors or something, or to be waiting before a show started. But we have since, through the Community Board submitting, they've asked us to close off that space at this time, because we, it was not within our permit or our use, and so it's used personally by my wife and myself, as it is our backyard also, but during performances, there is a door, it's closed, there's a curtain, it is completely blocked off, and nobody is in the backyard at all.
So is the proposal now to use?
No.
Backyard?
No.
So there's no proposal to return to the old days?
No, the backyard will be used just for our personal use.
Okay. Okay, and then, do you want a bit more else? Balcony? Balcony. What was the question about the balcony?
The rear deck balcony that was built.
That's related to the apartment?
That's the dwelling above.
That's on the second floor, or the mezzanine? Yes, it's the mezzanine.
There's a mezzanine area on the south end of the space.
Right.
It is where the cell has its offices.
But isn't there a deck that, that is?
You go up some stairs, and there's a, it's, it's not a very wide area, maybe 15 feet by the width of the building, and it has the four desks of the people who.
No, no, I mean outside.
Oh, outside, in the backyard.
The deck is going to the residential level, which is the, the floor above.
But how do you get to that deck? You have to come down to the theater to go out.
The deck is actually off the dining room of the apartment, which occupies the top two floors of the building.
Oh, what you're calling a deck, I would call a balcony, okay.
That balcony.
The balcony on the second floor.
Right.
That relates to the residential.
Correct.
But to get, for you to get to the backyard where that sort of porch, what I would call a deck is.
Come down right through the space, and there's a door there. There's no other stairway or anything like that.
And was there a permit for that balcony?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Just.
Always with approved plans and always with permits.
Okay. Okay.
And it actually does not penetrate into the rear yard, that's on the rear yard, the 30-foot required. Rear yard is in addition to that.
Right, okay. And then also, in terms of your rated capacity for the theaters, for the architect, your, the statement of facts, which you didn't write, states that there are 65 people who attend the events, but the plans show seating for 56. Is that your rated capacity, or?
We are, we're operating this thing on the premise that we are not a public assembly, we want to have one means of express, that's what the building provides. So the total occupancy, including performance, managing people that would be on-site during performances, and the audience would be less than 74.
Okay, but.
Less than 75, 74 or less.
Right, but normally, we would know what that is per square foot of people, right? Allowing, I don't know what you're allowing, in terms of the rated capacity for both seating and performers?
Well, the, the number of performers can vary, but the total capacity was 74. We did a seating layout that's part of our presentation there, that, I forgot, the numbers are 56 seats or 60 seats in that area.
Mm-hmm.
And that was just based on placement of seats in the comfort zone. Typically, for movable seats, the building part requires seven square feet.
Right.
Per屋. In this particular case, that would be in excess, that would be 80 seats, and so we're not, we're not asking for 80 seats, we're asking for 74 seats.
So what you're proposing is less than the rated capacity of the space?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Could you clarify that, that the rated capacity would allow whatever you said, but that the proposed use will be for a maximum of these many seats? Okay?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Because the, the Buildings Department of, of course, can look at what your actual use is, as opposed to deferring to the rated capacity.
Yes.
And so we just need to be clear that that's what you're opting to do, because most of the time it's the opposite.
And it's, my attention today, speaking with our person outside, that the rear yard, given its size, may be considered a place of refuge, which would change the, the dynamic.
Right, and that, I think that was a comment that we made yesterday, that you should actually be using the rear yard as an area of refuge, even if you don't want to change your capacity, because there is only one way out. Right? Okay. Makes people, people like us, people like the people who work for the fire department and things like that, more comfortable when we go to a venue and we don't need to stand near the exit. No, it's okay, I like to stand during the performances, I'm good.
In fairness, though, the distance between your seat and that door is greater than the furthest travel distance in this theater.
Well, that's good to know.
So.
Okay.
And so no scenery or anything like that, right? So you're not going to be like an F1B, and you've got a sprinkled space or anything
like that?
Correct, we're not.
Doesn't have the scenery of Torrendo at the Met.
But you could put on a little mini Torrendo.
We usually put on what in the theater they call workshops or just a plain reading and there's rarely scenery and sometimes there's not even costumes, so it's really bare bones.
And not even for that opera that you put on? Right, okay. I think those were our questions, right? Yeah, you know, so then I'd like to have the fire department speak about this because, yeah, because.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioner Anthony Scudidoff of the Fire Department. We haven't issued any official letter yet because I really wanted to get my assembly unit inspection team out to the site to do an overall inspection. There are some items that I've spoken to Stan Angelino and gentlemen associated with theater today. We are taking the position that this is a required assembly space and it will be required to get a PA permit. The reason being, the audience area is 560 feet. The building department calculates with non-fixed seating, seven square feet per person, that translates to 80 people occupancy for the audience section plus for staff and plus an estimated maximum of 12 performers. So in effect, what we're talking about is a total of possibly 96 people. We don't work on what the operators say, well, this is our operating number. We work on square footage and based on the square footage, it's a PA. In addition, we, I have to confirm this, but there is a dressing room in the cellar and that dressing room, based on standard requirements for theater, would need to be sprinkled. The stage, I personally don't believe should be sprinkled or will have to be sprinkled, but it's something that has to be confirmed. The reason being that the definition of what becomes scenery, scenery obviously in this venue is not, you know, what we would consider scenery, but if there are some props, because adjacent to the dressing rooms in the cellar is a theater storage area, storage of props and so on. So a prop is not scenery, but if scenery is used, then the stage will be required to be sprinkled. So at this point, the fire department position, short of what the result of our inspection will be, we consider it a place of assembly, it will require a PA permit and it will require two means of egress because it is. We recommended, again, it's a building department determination, not fire department, but we recommended that the rear exit be considered entry to a area of refuge, so we feel pretty safe that, you know, we're not, you know, putting them out of business. But it is, but it is an assembly space. Any questions?
Okay, no, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this? No, okay. Please.
Peter Mullin, I'm a junior architect. In my discussions with Anthony, I told him that I wanted to go further into that, the burial calculation to establish the capacity of the space because seven square feet per person is a net calculation, in other words, the net area that you're proceeding. And I really want to investigate net versus gross in this area so I can be on better ground.
Okay, understood. Oh, and one other note was that, which I'd also like the fire department's help with, the front gate swings opposite the direction of egress.
I had that conversation also. And this gate is about three feet high, it's not really a impediment to egress and it was, to me, there are two possibilities. One, we can change the swing of the gate to swing out. Fortunately, there is a stoop adjacent to our property directly to the rear, so it actually protects that area where the gate would swing. It wouldn't go into the transamin.
Oh, okay.
However, my feeling is more appropriately, since all of them swing in and that's a normal entrance, that it would be pinned back and we would treat it not unlike security gates on something where you lift them up so you can use the space and when the space is no longer occupied as a public use, they can go back into its swing position.
Okay, that's the fire department, you work out with the fire department, okay? Whatever's okay with them.
With regard to the dressing room and the sprinkler, by all means, we have no problem complying with any requirement, provide sprinklers to the dressing room.
Okay, good. Okay, so we need to wait until fire departments had a chance to conduct their inspection and give any other recommendations before we can close this because we want to make sure that you've amended the drawings to meet whatever their requirements are?
We're coordinating the inspection and we hope that it's going to take place this week.
Okay, great. So let's see, what other things do we need to do? I think that's it. Okay, what would be helpful is when you amend the plans to respond to the fire department, if you also show on the plans where the, when people come in to pay for the tickets, like where that is so we can get a sense of what the kind of lineup is, because it should be on the inside of the gates, right? So on the property side of the gate.
Actually, there is a fairly large area inside of the gates on the outside of the building.
Right.
Before you actually enter onto the public walk. So if there is a backup, it's not only that 15 feet that Alan mentioned, there is also some residual space outside.
Right, we noted that, but well, for one, the swing of the gate was impeding that. So if you keep the gate in the pinned open position, then people can actually be in that area where it swings. But there was also planters there, so it's occupied by stuff. So if you could realistically estimate how many people stand online, assuming it's a really good night and everyone wants to hear that reading of James Joyce or I don't know what.
We have done a calculation on that front area and standing room is very compact, which is probably in excess of the total capacity of the theater.
In just that area.
On that area outside.
Okay, so if you could demonstrate that to us by a diagram or a calculation, that would be helpful. Because that's one of the findings in the special permit, that you provide sort of an area of waiting that's not on the sidewalk.
Well, as Mr. Matt Turey mentioned, in this case, people have pre-purchased tickets and they're arriving with their own or they're evidently there.
But they still have to show it to somebody.
They walk in 15 feet and then they sit down. It's sort of a sit-down unless you're waiting for your date outside.
Right, but you still have to show it to somebody. So I've gotten to a lot of these performances where, you know, you still are waiting to show and what do you mean, my name's not on the list, et cetera. Yes, it is. Okay, okay, so any other comments? And we got the speakers. Okay, so what do we say for the fire department to conduct and do and all that? You probably need?
To coordinate, I would have an answer within, you know, a few days in terms of my written testimony, so let's say two weeks for us.
Two weeks for you and then you need to amend the plan. So I'd say like a hearing on April 12th again, that works, right?
No.
Where you would be submitting all your materials unless you think that's too soon, by March 23rd. Yeah, March 23rd. Does that sound good?
By March 23rd.
That work?
That works.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Item number 3, 18715 B.C., 500-514, let's go. Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicants. Attended yesterday's review session and I don't think there were any questions for me. Point of clarification is that it's an open nail salon, which doesn't require a PCE. We have not started giving massages yet, but they will be performed by licensed, New York State licensed massage therapist.
Right, so it's really not a legalization.
It's not a legalization.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to clarify so the term is current with the resolution.
Okay, any comments on this one? Are there any speakers on this? So for a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And for a motion to grant?
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair?
Aye.
Hinkson, sorry.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 4, 20215 B.C., 6469 Broadway, the Bronx.
Benjamin Stark for Slater and Beckerman. On behalf of 6469 Broadway Housing Development Fund Company.
Yeah, can, does that get any longer?
This is every time I come here, it's always the same comment.
Yes. Sorry, you don't represent the standard applicant.
Benjamin Stark for New York Knicks. Yes, okay, so once again, my name's Benjamin Stark. I'm with Slater and Beckerman P.C. We're here on behalf of 6469 Broadway Housing Development Fund Company Incorporated. They are the applicant for an application pursuant to Section 7221 of the zoning resolution for variance at 6469 Broadway located in the Riverdale section of Bronx Community Board Eight. This variance request seeks a partial waiver, a reduction of the required number of parking spaces from the 19 spaces required pursuant to Section 7525 of the zoning resolution down to 11 spaces. So I'm just going to kind of give a little background of this project. The project is an 11-story, approximately 105-foot-tall nonprofit residence for the elderly. It will be approximately 63,000 square feet and the building is, at this stage, topped out, about 95% complete, 90 to 95% complete. This building has a long procedural history, going back to the applicant's search for public financing and in, associated with our environmental submissions, you've probably seen that we included a submission of a previous environmental assessment statement related to HPD financing. So this project, which will have 85 profit generating nonprofit residence for the elderly dwelling units in one Subaru's unit, initially was proposed to be a joint nonprofit residence for the elderly and supportive housing project. After meeting with members of the community, the supportive housing element was dropped and this became entirely a nonprofit residence for the elderly. As the project plan continued to formulate and continued to move along, the applicant sought confirmation from the buildings department that the number of parking spaces that would be required at the time 19 could be provided in a parking stacker system. And as our papers indicate, we have zoning determinations evidencing that fact. Now, to confirm that these parking stacker, this parking stacker system could be attended and manned by the employees and staff of the building as anticipated by the projected costs of the super and the onsite staff, we submitted a, or the applicant submitted a zoning resolution determination request seeking confirmation that the spaces could be manned by those existing building staff. And the Department of Buildings issued a positive determination to that effect. The project continued to formulate. In June of 2014, a building permit was issued and we began substantial construction. Five months, five to six months after the issuance of that building permit in June of 2014, an audit from the Bronx Borough Commissioner was handed down and the permit was pulled. And at the time, a substantial amount of construction had been undertaken on the site, the footings were in, almost half the site work was complete and a substantial amount of the concrete work was complete. That is basically the procedural history of where we have come to today. We had a building that was substantially completed. We have a site, I should really back up. The whole genesis of this varying, or this whole genesis of this building design was initially impacted by a very unique set of physical conditions on this site. These physical conditions include a rock outcropping that occupies the rear third of the subject property. This rock outcropping was, to manage this rock outcropping in designing a building that would meet the applicant's pragmatic need, required a shorter or a floor plate that is less deep than would otherwise be constructed as of right. This single-loaded corridor is less efficient than a double-loaded corridor design and has added somewhat of a cost premium on a design that could otherwise be undertaken should a double-loaded corridor be designed. In addition to the rock outcropping, subsurface rock inhibited the applicant from constructing a full cellar. So the cellar that is provided is only a partial cellar and contains mechanicals and a stormwater retention tank. So these were some of the issues that we were, that the applicant was dealing with prior to the pulling of the permit in the fall of 2014.
With respect to the single-loaded corridor, it's not that the floor plate is bigger for the single-loaded corridor, it's that it's a less efficient floor plate, right?
Absolutely.
Because your statement of fact says the floor plate would have been bigger. That doesn't make any sense at all.
I think what I, I read the section, I remember your comment yesterday, we attended a review session. I think I definitely didn't word it right. I said the floor plate would have been wider, maybe I should have said it would have been deeper and less.
The floor plate for a double-loaded corridor would have been deeper.
Deeper.
But what you, I think you said is that the double-loaded, that this solution is deeper than the double-loaded corridor.
If I said that, then that was a mistake.
Yeah.
The double-loaded corridor is a more efficient design.
But deeper.
And deeper, but due to the presence of the rock outcropping.
You couldn't do it.
We couldn't do it. It would have required additional excavation and even if we undertook the additional excavation of the rock outcropping, the proximity of the rock outcropping to the rear windows of the units in that rear corridor would have been, it would not have been adequate.
Okay.
That said, these unique physical conditions, the rock outcropping, the subsurface rock that is at an unusually shallow depth, and the site's history as a former gas station and refilling station are unique physical conditions that from the get-go impacted the applicant's ability to develop a building that was fully maximized based on the lot size and the site's R6 and C22 zoning designation. However, they proceeded on an as-of-right basis. Once the DOB's audit came down, we were in a position where the building was substantially completed and it was not apparent how we would have been able to provide the required parking. The option that DOB lobbed back at us, which was provide a 24-hour parking attendant, is in no way financially viable for a nonprofit affordable housing project. It would have added an additional cost of approximately $186,000 a year. This is a building that will have a super and maybe a few onsite staff to aid the residents, but having three or four additional employees to man eight parking stackers 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, it was not viable. In addition, actually undertaking excavation at that point in time was similarly unviable. The building was, as I said, substantially complete, there are footings in the ground, millions of dollars in expenditures had already been spent in site work. To try to maneuver the equipment into the rear yard in order to undertake excavation is a near impossibility and that's notwithstanding the fact that undertaking any excavation of the rock outcropping at all is a near impossibility due to the safety concerns of compromising the buildings that are situated along Post Road above the site. So.
But just to be clear, the first three zoning interpretations that you got indicated that you could have on staff, people who are already on staff, be the attendance for the parking.
The first zoning resolution determination that we saw was just a baseline determination. It said, can we provide the spaces via stacker system? Yes, confirmed. The second zoning res- The second zoning resolution determination request, which in our papers is defined as the second ZRD-1, this is the real meat of the audit. This ZRD-1 stated quite clearly that the onsite staff, including the building's super or other onsite staff, could manage the stacker system and, under the definition of fully-attended parking, under the zoning resolution, that this would meet that definition. And indeed, the Buildings Department's reversal on this question is quite evident. They, you no longer can even access the ZRD-1 on the Buildings Department's website. They have pulled it from their own website, likely in an effort to not confuse future applicants to the Buildings Department.
In other words, the one where they said that you could use in-house staff?
Yeah, luckily, we kept copies of it, because you can't even find it online.
And then the third ZRD-1 was the one that resulted after audit?
The third ZRD-1 was, just based on the timing of the project, it actually mirrors the first ZRD-1. So the first ZRD-1 was when the project, as I had said earlier, was part NPRE, part supportive housing. We then sought the second ZRD-1, which I just mentioned, and then the third ZRD-1, in between the first and the third, it became full NPRE, and we just sought confirmation again that, here, we've now changed the program a little bit, we've added some Use Group Two, taken away some Use Group Three, may we still provide these spaces via stacker? And yes, that was confirmed.
Right, oh, I see, okay, okay. Thanks. I also have a question about that. So when you got that final determination, maybe there were other kinds of reasons. Why didn't you go for, why didn't you go to the next level up and talk to the Technical Affairs Commissioner instead of just the Borough Commissioner?
Well, we had numerous meetings with the Borough Commissioner, and the reasons as to why this wasn't taken up higher to the Technical Affairs Commissioner, I can't personally speak to that at this time if...
Okay. I just thought you might have the answer. It's not, it doesn't really matter, you're here for a variance, but it's part of the, it's kind of an interesting, it was a strange procedural life. So if we were going, if we were using the detrimental reliance argument, we would need to know that. But if we're not using a detrimental reliance argument, and we're going, in terms of the A finding, and we're looking at your physical conditions on the site, then we don't need to know about the reliance on those predeterminations. Do you know what I mean?
I understand what you mean, but we're using, our argument of detrimental reliance is in support of the A finding under the James Estate cases that state that the reasonable, detrimental reliance on a DOB directive can contribute to a unique condition. And you need, the unique conditions that create our hardship here.
But, I mean, normally, you would keep going up the chain of command until you couldn't do it anymore, right? Until you found that everybody disagreed with you and had changed their position, you know? Normally, you're going up the chain of command.
I understand. I guess I would have, would argue that if this was an interpretive appeal, our need to exhaust might be more paramount, but, you know, this is a variance case, and we're utilizing the detrimental reliance argument in relation to the A finding. But, be that as it may, this is not the only element of this application, or the only element of this site that is unique, not by any stretch of the term. Just to give a little more background on some of these unique conditions here, this rock outcropping rises above the subject property between an elevation of 20 and 50 feet above what I'll call like the development site portion of the subject property fronting on Broadway. This rock outcropping, which is at an approximately 50 to 60-degree slope, although it impacts the site immediately to the south of us in a similar respect, this site, and I'll get into a little later, is quite easy to distinguish. It does not, however, affect the site to the north of us as severely. We have searched, and I know this was a question of the board, we have searched high and far for a publicly accessible topographical map that would have the level of detail necessary to show the differentiation between this site and the site north of us. Unfortunately, couldn't find it. We found some topo maps, but they're of North Bronx generally. You get, if everyone's looked at a topo map, you get like one contour line across multiple streets. It just wasn't, wasn't working. Be that as it may, the survey that we did submit in support of this fact does show contour lines coming across our property line boundary and affecting the properties north of us, or west of us and north of us. And from this survey, in conjunction with some photographs that we submitted, I believe it's quite clear that the rock outcropping does not impact the site north of us to the degree that it affects us. That said, the site north of us, just in the same way as the site south of us, are easily distinguishable. I believe that a member of the board had noted this yesterday, that these sites are corner lots. And in our six districts, corner lots are permitted, well, in our six district, you're permitted a curb cut for every one frontage. So if you're a corner lot, you have two frontages, you get two curb cuts. If you have two curb cuts and you're affected by this rock outcropping, you could conceivably, at the time of development, you'll have more lot, open lot area to work with in laying out a parking area because of the fact that you won't have to provide as much space for maneuverability lanes. In this district, you have to provide a 24-foot-wide maneuverability lane. At our moment in time, when all this became part of our consciousness, the audit, when this building was, had undergone substantial development, we were limited to one curb cut. With our footings already in place, trying to fit additional parking in the rear or potentially underneath the northern part of the building in place of some of the program space would have required the maneuverability lane running along the back in order to access these other areas. That would have required additional excavation of the rock outcropping, which, due to the presence of the homes along Post Road and the unbelievable uncertainties as to what would happen if we started drilling into it, it was not viable. That's putting aside the cost of even excavating the rock, which has been estimated at approximately $2 million, which is not possible for a nonprofit housing developer. So, the sites to the south and sites to the north, if they are to be seen as impacted in a similar respect by the rock outcropping, their condition as corner lots provide them more flexibility in laying out an at-grade parking area.
And the parking garage itself, the one that's next door, is built on top of the rock.
Built on top and into it, which, the more and more I look at this parking garage, the more and more I'm confused as to how they were even able to build that. Pursued the zoning because my understanding of rear yard requirements, although, you know, maybe the site is only at such a depth that is not in a required rear yard, you only get 14 feet, and that looks like it's about 25 feet tall. I don't know.
Maybe it's based on a average base plane.
Possibly.
Yeah.
Us, we wouldn't have that option. If we were to try to do some sort of parking deck in the back, in all likelihood, we would be above our permitted obstruction level, and that's notwithstanding, where would we put a maneuverability lane to get up to a parking deck? It's just not possible here. So, I believe that I've mentioned that numerous ways that the rock outcropping is, it affects our property differently than the sites to the south and north of us. But I also think it's important to note that this board has granted, or has found, that unique conditions in situations where the condition is impacting neighboring lots to the similar extent, and that it's only, uniqueness is only required in the context of the general area, or the, more of the greater surroundings, as opposed to the sites immediately north and south. I think a common example of that is where the board is faced with L-trains, I think, is where, you guys have seen that, right? Where if a site is adjacent to an L train, the ones north and south, they don't have to be as unique compared to them as other ones in the surrounding area. Anyway, the other elements of this site's uniqueness, the subsurface rock, there was question yesterday, at yesterday's review session, as to how can we have not submitted any evidence of that? Well, I promise you, right now, this very moment, a representative of our firm is at the BSA filing boring logs that show. You'll go back to your office later, and there'll be boring logs sitting on your desk. They're very exciting boring logs, because they show that the subject property, over the mass majority of it, basically everything, the boring logs, the boring's were taken starting in the southwest of what, again, I'm calling the development site of the subject property. No boring's, no boring's were taken from the rock outcropping for just functionality reasons. The boring's were taken on the flat portion of the property, and the boring started in this corner, and they moved to this corner here. Even the boring's up in this corner hit refusal at under two feet, about a foot. Dead center at about three feet. Only when you get into the forward, or the most easterly 20 to 25 feet on the northern corner of the property, do you not get refusal until about eight feet. Even then, that is a pretty shallow, or that's subsurface rock at a very shallow depth. These, this subsurface rock has impacted the design of the building, as I said earlier. We're only constructing a partial cellar. This partial cellar is to be used for the stormwater retention tank and various mechanicals, and we're not able to program it. So, for our, the applicant, who is required certain common spaces in this building, these common spaces have to move up, and other accessory spaces for this residential building had to move upward. Now, earlier, I had said that the location of, that on-grade parking could not be accommodated on the northern part of the site due to the presence of program space. This program space, which include, is, on our plans, is indicated as commercial space on the ground floor and community facility space on the upper floor, is paramount for the financial viability of this project. We previously submitted a partial financial analysis, which shows that these spaces, or that this commercial space on the ground floor and community facility space on the second floor are, they're needed to be leased out at their expected rates, or this project is in the red. So, to the extent that the board would say, well, how come you don't put a second parking space on that level, just in the same way as providing parking, parking under here, these community facility spaces are, as I said, necessary for the financial viability of the project. And that's also notwithstanding the fact that you'd have to access these spaces somehow, and you could not access them with a second curb cut.
Okay, just to clarify on that. So the first thing is, you're closer to rock on that side too, right? So you can't do the same thing as you did on the south side.
Exactly. Even if we did have the option of a second curb cut, you would again have to, potentially have to excavate some rock. And, like I said before, we can't access it up through the back, and all that is, putting aside the fact that we need the spaces there, that they're, in order to even achieve the anticipated rents that we're looking for from this ground floor commercial space and second floor community facility space, part of the attraction of these spaces is their ground floor location and frontage on Broadway.
So, but, it's not, it sort of doesn't matter about your financial conditions when you can't put a second curb cut there because the regulations forbid it, right? Is that the reason, what's the reason for your second curb cut not functioning?
Oh, you can't even do a second curb cut?
Yeah, you can't do it.
Right, it's not permitted.
Yeah, it's not even permitted. But even if it was permitted...
No, no, but it's not permitted, so, because this is a question about an as-of-right project, right? So, the second curb cut isn't permitted, so even if you wanted to put parking on that side, you can't, because there's no way to get to it.
Exactly.
You can't get there without cutting your rock outcropping. So it almost doesn't, so the, so the financial viability in terms of rental space almost doesn't matter in terms of that, even if you were willing to give it up, you couldn't do it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Right. It's physically impossible.
So, you know, we've gone over some of the unique, the unique physical conditions, both the rock outcropping, the below-surface soil conditions. I believe I mentioned in passing that the site is also a brownfield. This site was earmarked for Track One cleanup through the New York State Brownfield Program. This cleanup has been completed at the same time as we're submitting these boring logs at this very moment. A certificate of completion is also being submitted into the record for the Brownfield Program. And the, and as I'd said, the fourth element of our uniqueness here is, again, the detrimental reliance on a previously issued determination of the Buildings Department. Now, in addition to unique physical conditions, and the unique physical conditions having a negative impact on our, the applicant's ability to realize its program, a grant of a variance in this case would not have detrimental impact on neighboring properties, it would not have a detrimental impact on the surrounding community. We, the applicant, has retained an environmental consultant to study the amount of parking that a use at this extent would generate, 85 units of nonprofit residence for the elderly. And we have a representative here from Philip and Bueben Associates who'd like to speak, to how she came to the conclusion that 85 units of nonprofit residence for the elderly would only generate a demand for nine parking spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Norah Bell Greenberger from Philip and Bueben Associates. So as Ben mentioned, we prepared the EAS for the project before you today. There was an EAS that was prepared in 2014 for the project with the 19 parking spaces. So our EAS really focused just on that change, the reduction of the eight parking spaces. For a project that's predominantly residential such as this, we look at the period when parking demand is supposed to be the greatest. For residential projects, that is the overnight period. For overnight period, we look at auto ownership, which is the greatest determinant for estimating parking demand. Whenever we have a project before us, we always try to look at what's the most accurate and also representative data source that can be used to kind of reflect the type of development that's being proposed. In this case, it's multi-unit, it's affordable, it's senior, it's also located a little bit more than a half-mile from a subway station, but also very close to several bus lines. Another factor is the fact that it's older householders. Yes. And so, to determine what to use, we looked at a survey that was conducted by City Planning in 2014. The survey looked at recent construction since 2000, looked at whether the houses were built since, sorry, were built further than a half-mile from a subway station, or closer than a half-mile, also looked at whether they were affordable developments or senior developments. This study found that, on average, multifamily, senior, affordable housing developments that are located more than a half-mile from transit have 11 autos per 100 households, so that's the equivalent of a .11 autos per household rate. And that's the rate that we used in our analysis, which arrived at the nine demand, nine spaces demand for the overnight period. If you have any questions about methodology or the findings?
No. Appreciate it. Anybody?
I had a question. Also accessorite, is that, I'm assuming, is that used by many of the residents of the housing, and was that also considered into your travel?
We actually just discussing this recently, in terms of the bus that's near the building kind of functioning in a way like accessorite for this project. I'm not sure, I can't speak to whether accessorite would be used, because we're not looking as much at the in-out travel patterns during the day, more at the overnight period, we're less focused on how they're getting around in the day, since really, we're just focusing on the parking and not the travel demand.
Okay, thank you very much.
I kind of want to hammer one of Norah Bell's points home here, because I think it's really important. City planning in their, in formulating their study behind... City Planning in their, in formulating their study behind the ZQA text amendments has, you know, in a way, I agree with, with constituents all across the city who've said, well, well this transit zone versus non-transit zone delineation seems a little like painting with a pretty wide brush, that anyone who walks around this city might feel that, you know, just, just as the crow flies distance can sometimes not tell the whole story. In this instance, no one is denying that this site is, is, is too far from a subway station to have it be of any impact on a future resident. As a nonprofit senior resident, I don't think any constituents of this build, or residents of this building are going to walk over a half mile to a subway station. That said, it is our firm belief that this project is better served for its residents by public transit than even a building that was constructed two blocks from a subway station. Because we're, not only are adjacent to, or in close proximity to a bus stop, the bus stop is a covered bus stop right in front of the building. And the residents of this building are not using the subway, you know, subway is, is a, in a way, more of a regional transit connection that would bring people from outer boroughs into the city center for, on a, on a commuting basis. Whereas a bus can provide you with direct access to shops and, and local neighborhood amenities that a subway can't in a lot of, in a lot of ways. So, the fact that we have a, a bus stop immediately adjacent to this building, this building is better served for senior residents than even a, a senior residence that was within, within a couple blocks of a subway station, but not immediately adjacent to a bus stop. I think that's very important to note.
How, how far away is it from retail? Some, you know...
Retail is, is located, there's, there's retail within walking distance, actually, just around the corner on Moschulo Avenue, although it might actually, their retail is, is generally limited. There is retail a bit further south along Broadway, if you continue on that bus line. Eventually Broadway becomes quite a busy retail corridor down in Kingsbridge.
But that's if you're really on the bus for a while.
If you're, if you're really on the bus for a little bit.
It's not, in other words, it's five minutes.
Yeah, there's retail at the, at the subway station, actually, is pretty...
Okay, but it's a lot, the point is you have to take a bus to get to the retail. I'm just asking if they're, so, around the corner on Moschulo...
Oh, there's, there's...
You can buy milk, for example.
Yes.
Right, that's kind of what I was getting at. Right, okay. Not like you would ever...
Within walking distance, yes.
You would never take the subway to go buy milk.
And, and this, this stretch of Broadway, wide sidewalks, and, and you don't have to cross any street to wrap around onto Moschulo to access some of those, those shopping amenities. And, I know that there, there are members of the community that are concerned about, well, put aside the residents, what about visitors to this building? This is a senior residence, there's going to be, you know, mom and dad will want to visit, the grandkids will want to visit. We, we have found, our studies have, have assumed, or, or the City Planning studies and our studies have assumed that the demand for 11 parking spaces per 100 households assumes that, that, that type of activity. But putting that even aside, we did a, a survey of on-street parking within the surrounding area and nearly every street in the surrounding area does have some degree of, of on-street parking available to it. In addition to that, the, immediately, immediately adjacent to the site in Van Cortlandt Park, there is a public parking lot within walking distance of the site that could be used by the grand, grandparent, or kids and grandkids who want to come visit.
Adjacent to this building, isn't there another senior facility?
There is another senior facility.
Were you able to glean anything from that facility in terms of parking?
The applicant has, has looked into it and, and just as in other senior residences across the city, our understanding is those spaces go underutilized.
By how many do you know?
Uh, we, we don't have the direct numbers on that. But, our, our, the applicant, in this instance, also operates a number of other senior residences citywide, most of which are outside the transit zone. And we have conducted in-depth parking surveys of those locations and we have found that, that those sites generally see about 40 to 50% occupancy. And that, and that is noted in our papers. And, we also note that City Planning, in coordinating their studies of what the demand is for parking for affordable senior residences, also have looked within to other city agencies, including HPD, and, and conducted site surveys of, of the, the usage of parking for affordable senior residences amongst those, those publicly funded projects. And, and it's the same story there, that, that oftentimes, even outside the transit zone, the parking spaces are vastly underutilized.
Well, with, with respect to that, can you find out what the utilization rate of the adjoining property is? I mean, actually, perhaps you could, the two of you function as overflow, you know, if on the rare occasion when you might actually need parking, you use the guy next door's and they use...
I mean, that's something that, that the applicant would be happy to look into, but to the ex, the extent that you, you would want us to actually survey them and, and, and have hard pass numbers as to their utilization at any given time, that's a, a process that might take quite a while. We don't have a, a direct, open line of communication with them to, to undertake a survey of that type, if they haven't done so already.
Well, I don't really mean to serve, they probably are aware now of how much their parking is used. You would think.
Yeah.
That's a phone call to the manager. Right? Not, I don't mean a survey where you sit there and you do car counts for three days. No? That's an inquiry that you could make.
Yes. And, following issuance of a CO, I, although I can't speak directly for the applicant, I, I don't, I don't see any problem as to why we couldn't serve as overflow for them if, if, you know, one of their, their residents was having a, a birthday party in the building and, you know, there's extra activity going on and vice versa for us to them. And although I, I know Norabel mentioned this, the, it, it again is paramount to, to mention that the city's studies for the ZQA text amendment were undertaken to support a proposed rule change that for this particular project, if approved, would require only nine parking spaces at this location, two less than what we proposed to provide.
If the ZQA is approved?
If the ZQA is approved.
And this application came for a permit prior, after the ZQA was approved?
That is correct.
Then, that was, would be the criteria, assuming it's approved.
Conceptually, just something to think about.
Yeah, yeah. Because, right, okay. Any other questions here? Okay, anything else you want to add?
I'm just trying to think about any other questions that may have come up yesterday at review session.
Because we have speakers, so I wanted to get to the speakers unless you, because you can always continue.
Unless you guys have any, any additional questions, I'm happy to hand it off to other speakers.
Okay, let's do that. Okay, thank you. So, are there speakers on this? So, please come up to the little ramp there and whoever's first come to the podium and state your name and you have three minutes to speak. Unless you represent an elected official. Do we have any reps from elected officials? No? Okay.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Spalter. I am speaking for Bronx Community Board Eight in opposition to this waiver. The board passed a resolution on November 12th, 2015. There were many whereas clauses, I will just focus on three. Allow me to quote, "The necessary Board of Standards and Appeals finding of unique physical conditions has not been met because the entire development, including space for parking, has been accommodated in their plans and has already been constructed. Whereas the necessary Board of Standards and Appeals finding of practical difficulties and unnecessary hardships has not been met because the building and space for parking has been accommodated in spite of the rock outcroppings and exceptional topographical conditions cited in their application. Whereas the necessary Board of Standards and Appeals finding that any variance is the minimum necessary to avoid relief has not been met because prior plans approved by the Department of Buildings showed parking stackers sufficient to meet the zoning requirements." The building has been built. Self-help took the public money, obtained necessary approvals and permits, understood the number of required spaces, and designed this building with lift parking to satisfy the requirement. At this late date, to apply for a va, a variance is outrageous. They've had many options. They could have built a smaller building that would not need lift parking to satisfy the parking requirement. They could and still should apply for relief from expensive regulations regarding lift parking, not relief from the mandated number of parking spots. This is a totally different area that they should go into for relief. I'd like to end with a quote from our Congressman Elliot Engel, our State Senator Jeffrey Klein, our Assemblyman Jeffrey Dinowitz, and our Councilmember Andrew Cohn. Self-help should have taken into account the number of spaces required when designing and constructing the building, rather than asking for a waiver at this late date. We strongly urge you to reject their application for a parking waiver. To grant this waiver sets a dangerous precedent for Community Board Eight. A personal note, as I still might have a few seconds, I think it's debatable as to whether seniors own cars. However, the 86 residents will have guests, will have attendants, will have workers, and will have staff, as well as a commercial space. I will let local residents go on as my time is up and I thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you.
I'd like to just enter this resolution into the record, please.
Okay. Wait, that's a Community Board resolution?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Which I think we already have, right?
I believe it's already been entered into the record.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm a member of the Broadway Community Alliance and nigh on to 40-year resident of the community near this project. I'm speaking anecdotally, I'm clearly not an expert, I can tell you how well you read, but I don't know construction, but I have followed this. My understanding is the additional parking allowed the developer to build additional space. So, to renege on that additional parking at this time is really not fair to the community. Parking, and it's not fair to the community to assess parking in the evening, although I don't know how they came about, thinking that parking is not needed in the community in the evening. My husband and I came home one day during summer and decided, let's go to a restaurant close to this development. It took us about 40 minutes to find an open space, which required us to walk about five blocks to the restaurant, which is about half a block away from this site. So, in the evening, parking is at a major premium. During the day, parking is at a major premium. I have the opportunity to go past the other building, at least three or four times a week, those spaces are filled. This is a community, hey, I've been on Medicare a while, my husband's 75, we have two cars. Seniors in Riverdale, and if you look at any of the parking surveys, indicate that seniors in Riverdale drive. People in this building, the well-elderly, will be driving, they will need the spaces. And darn it, they should probably have the right to those spaces in that amenity. So, and my last question in terms of the, my last thought in terms of the finances, this building is paid for by public money. It's grants and will have $850,000 a year in rents. So, to claim financial hardship at this late date is also not fair to the community. So, I urge you to reject this application and to take into account the things that Mrs. Spalter and other people said, and that to go up the chain of command to get the answer that you can use staff to man, to man the lift parking so that all of the spaces are provided. And I thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Damian McShane. I'm a former Community Board Eight member, I'm the former Chair of the Board, and I was actually dragged out of semi-public service retirement by Charles Merdler to help the Board evaluate this project. I'm gonna ask that the BSA today on the, reject this as there is no basis for an appeal on the grounds of unique conditions creating a financial hardship at this site. The applicant is seeking relief for a condition the DOP is not imposing. The application should be dismissed and the, the applicant seeks relief for a condition that does not exist. In their appeal to the BSA, they identified two separate conditions. Number one, that unique conditions of the site, as it pertains to adding at-grade parking cause an undue financial burden, anything to do with brownfield conditions or single-loaded corridors or curb cuts is irrelevant to this application. All of that was funded, all of that was approved in their application to the DOP. Number two, that additional conditions for full-time attendance set forth by the DOP after an audit of the original approved application causes an undue burden on the applicant. The applicant is seeking relief under the former based on issues raised in the latter item. The financial hardship being placed on the applicant is a requirement to provide full-time parking attendance, has nothing to do with the topographical conditions of the site. The applicant is taking the extreme position that the only resolution to the DOP ruling is to provide additional at-grade parking. The DOP has made no such ruling and imposed no such requirement on the applicant. Because the applicant has made this assumption, they are seeking BSA relief based on and citing unique conditions, which creates a financial burden to the excavation required to add the additional at-grade parking, which the DOP has not required of them. As discussed in your executive session, to a degree, they're mixing apples and oranges here. There is no hardship created by the unique conditions. The design was approved and the project is fully funded through state-issued bonds and other public funding with stacked parking. Any excavation for that work is complete, any funding required for the stacked parkers is in place. As discussed in your executive session yesterday, where am I here? I ask that you consider that the applicant has erred in his findings and in this filing. The issue at hand is the DOP judgment regarding parking attendance, that is the undue burden here. The issue should be considered a detrimental reliance and the relief sought in interpretive appeal. There's a resolution here, one that will not place any financial hardship on the applicant or a burden on the surrounding community. It requires that the BSA dismiss this application and the applicant either appeal the audit findings with the City DOP Commissioner, or properly file the BSA appeal to address the actual hardship, which is the requirement for full-time parking attendance, the resolution for which should be waiving of the parking requirement, not the elimination of much-needed parking in the community. I would just like to make two quick additional points. Again, the developer has multiple avenues here for remediation of the DOP audit above and beyond this appeal, which includes an appeal to the City Commissioner and then an appeal to the BSA based on the detrimental reliance. Number one, while I cannot definitively state that this project would not have received any public funding without the required parking, parking for the zoning resolution, I would point to the considerable political opposition as support of that idea. Number two, the Department of City Planning funding that was cited factors in Manhattan densities here. You are in Riverdale, which is a residential community, it is extremely hilly. This is not a care facility, this is designed for the well-elderly, the mean, or, excuse me, the entry age for which is 62 years of age. I will be working at 62 and I will likely be driving at that age. In Riverdale, there's very limited public transportation in east-west direction, the only public transportation goes down Broadway. The closest pharmacy, the closest supermarket in this community is to the west of this facility up a hill. Applicants will not have any public transportation to take them to that. The closest supermarket is 30 blocks away, which is more than a five-minute bus ride. I thank you again for your time and I ask you to consider my testimony today and disregard this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Tara McMaster and I live in the area. In response to the traffic study, I'd like to speak on a few points. First of all, there is no parking around now. I don't know when this study was... I don't know when this study was done. It may be in the middle of the night, but there is really no street parking. We're a little bit.
You mean, no available spaces?
Unique. There aren't any, and most of the houses do not have garage, garages. They are using the street parking. There is no alternate side, which sounds like a blessing, but it really isn't, because we have a lot of people that live out of the borough. They may live in Manhattan and park their cars there for extended periods of time. We also have people that drive and park by us, and then take the bus to the number-one train from Yonkers and Westchester. That's another issue. A lot of the cars that are registered are not registered in New York State. A lot of people register their cars out of state for cheaper insurance rates, so if they've used car registration records, they may not completely be accurate. The parking that they're talking about in Van Cortlandt Park is almost over a quarter of a mile away. I have two dogs, I'm in the park constantly. It is dedicated to the stables, and there is a hiking trail. Very seldom is there a park, any parking in there on the weekends. There's a cricket field that's used in front. Even if they were able to use that parking and there were spaces, no one is coming to visit someone and walking a quarter of a mile to this building. Okay? It is not, they're making it sound like it's across the street. It's across the street and into the park. Sixty-two is, again, I agree, very young. People that are over, that are sixty-two are driving. And, oh, the commercial space, all right? A lot of the parking right around the corner where they're talking about the stores that the people can visit, it's metered parking. It's the, you know, the new, so whatever commercial space they put in there, they haven't allotted, they need the parking. There is a bus stop in front of it. You can't park there. The seniors center on the corner, they're going to tell you that they've done a study and that the parking lot is empty. I walk my dogs twice a day into Van Cortlandt Park. I don't know, I can't say whose cars they are that are in there. They're full. The people that are in this home are going, this residence are going to have cleaning ladies, they're going to have visiting nurses, they're going, they may have other help, they may have people, you know, that come in daily to help them. My mom's elderly, she has someone that comes a couple of hours. Unless these people are taking public transportation, they're going to need parking. The super is not going to park on the street. The handyman are not going to park on the street. So even if you say that they don't need all of these parking spaces, maybe all the residents aren't going to use them, but their visitors, their nurses, their doctors, all of these other people are going to need parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay. Thanks. Do you want to respond to any of those comments?
Just, just one comment. I was able to confer with, with the applicant, our client, regarding the site to the, to the north of us, located on the corner of Mashula Avenue and Broadway.
The residential building.
The residential building, and I have to correct what I said earlier. We have spoken to them, and in contradiction to what some of the, what you just heard from some members of the community, the operator of that building has attested to the fact that, on average, only three out of ten of their spaces are occupied at any given time by residents of the building. Now, and potentially, those are people from Westchester. I can't speak to that.
No, so let, let's just talk about, it doesn't matter whether it's the residents of the building, it has to do with the, with how filled the parking lot is.
I understand.
Right.
So, but that was the extent of our question to, to the neighboring property owner, which is, how many, how many spaces are occupied by residents of your building? And the answer that we got was three out of ten.
You want to speak?
Yeah, I mean, the, the onsite parking for residences is for residents of the building.
Residents.
If it is, if it is used by other people, it, and technically, I mean, they can do it, but.
No, it's residents and their guests.
Yeah.
Residents and their guests.
Residents and their guests.
So I'm not saying they're using it as public parking, right? It's residents and their.
They do that, but that's not the purpose of accessory parking.
Right, but so that, that's the thing is, if they're renting it out, again, management would know whether those are spaces that are being rented out to outsiders, because the rule is the second a tenant wants to use the parking space, that outsider has to vacate, if it's a month-to-month, within thirty days, right?
I understand. So I, like I said, our question to the, to the owner, the operator of that building was, was, was limited to how many of your residents occupy those spaces? And the answer that we got was, was three out of ten.
Okay, so you're going to need to clarify that, because we have at least two testimonies that say that when passing by that parking area, it's full, versus three out of ten, right? So there's a, there's a right answer, it can't be both, everybody's right. So if, with some serious data from the property owners, how, how are those spaces occupied? Are they occupied by the visit, by the residents and their guests? Or are they being rented to outsiders, and that's why it's looking like it's full?
I understand that that's something that we could look into, but, you know, our, our position is that on the, on the five findings of seventy-two-twenty-one, that we, we more than meet the.
But there's two, there's several parts to the variance, right? You make your findings of whether you've got unique physical conditions, then you have to, somewhere down the line, you have to make a finding that it, it comports with neighborhood character, and that there are no negative, for instance, environmental impacts. So if one of the impacts is that there is a problem in terms of parking, and that the studies are not reflecting the actual uses, because you're saying that the neighbor is actually, they're saying the neighbor is actually using all the parking spaces. If they're not actually using the parking spaces, but in fact renting them out to other neighbors, that's information we should have. Because one of the reasons that I'm responding this way, I'm very sympathetic with the problems, and it's quite a small application, but I don't actually understand why this didn't come in as an interpretive appeal. And I want to explain to the neighbors who are here that we don't have the authority under the way the application was submitted to rule on whether or not attended parking is attended by an in-house, like the super in the building, versus a full-time devoted parking attendant. We just don't have any authority based on how this application was brought in. And, and so, so we can't, in the scope of this application, do anything except respond to your request to reduce the parking requirement, right?
Well, I, I think the answer is, is, if it hasn't been, if I have made it clear to you from the beginning, then I apologize, but this site has, had impacted design of the building from the get-go. And, and even from the get-go, this site was a potential variance candidate due to the impacts of, of the rock outcropping and the subsurface conditions. Now that said, to, to, at the, well.
No, not really, because you were, because your owner, your, your client was building a complying building.
Because.
And willing to build stackers which are expensive.
It's a balance of.
And willing to attend them with in-house staff.
I understand. It's a balance of trying to build a project that meets our programmatic need and the cost to get there. And, and at that time, although these unique conditions were, were impacting our ability to meet our programmatic need, you know, it was the determination of the applicant that we didn't, that, that we were okay to proceed, and, and that even though we were negatively impacted, we weren't negatively impacted to such an extent at that time to have to proceed with a variance application. Now, following the DOP audit, and, and our permit being pulled, to proceed with an administrative appeal, and I would, I would, you know, something I'd like the community to know, is that there are costs associated with proceeding with administrative appeal, just like there are costs with proceeding with this, this variance request.
Yes.
And for a nonprofit, affordable housing developer, proceeding with administrative appeal where, which may or may not be approved, to then even receive approval of that administrative appeal after expending carrying costs and soft costs even get to that point, it still does not, that then needs to be factored into.
I just want to just remind the Board that the administrative appeal is not what is before the Board.
It's not before us, yes.
And that we have, and that we have five findings.
Right.
That, that are being questioned. And I realize the testimony brought up the administrative appeal, and that is on, on everyone's mind, but, but, one, it's not before us, and, two, I think we would be, want to be very cautious before we wade into just, you know, what is essentially a citywide.
Right.
Sort of interpretation that buildings is apparently making, and we, we need to have much more information before we discuss that. Let's focus on the variance.
No, we're not discussing, no, 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 we're not discussing the administrative appeal. The point is, we have testimony.
Ben was. I don't want him to.
Oh, okay. The point is, we have testimony that says that we have a problem with the parking assumption about the need for parking and its impact on the neighborhood. Whenever we have requests for a reduction in parking, we look at the parking studies. And normally, a parking study by Philip Habib's office is, you know, something that we really take great amount of credit, give a lot of credit to. But when we have testimony that says the assumption that you're making is opposite of what we actually see going on next door, then we need to, we need to dig further into that. We can't ignore it, right?
I understand. I guess I just think about, well, where do we go from here?
You go from here by responding to those issues.
I don't, we have, we've already reached out, we've spoken to that.
No, you haven't. You found out three out of ten residents. You didn't find out what would account for why the spaces are, seem to be occupied.
So I, I guess I have a question, because what you're saying, just sort of beg the question then, what you really mean is, or think what you're really saying is, is that regardless of what the building department told you at any given moment in time, you feel that you would be entitled or, or can, can come to the Board for a variance under seventy-two-twenty-one for parking relief? That regardless of whether the building department told you anything about, you know, twenty-four-hour guard booths, or guards, or whatever, that because of the condition of your property, you are here under that, and it has nothing, has really nothing to do with what the building department told you or didn't tell you?
I don't totally know if I would categorize it that way.
Because you're missing detr, detr.
Yeah, so I want, yeah.
You came in as two applications simultaneously. You came in with an application for detrimental reliance, because they're not really, they don't normally travel in tandem. There's the detrimental reliance argument for your A, or there's the unique physical conditions about your site for your A. They're not normally traveling together. So if you, either we look at detrimental reliance as your argument, and how detrimental was it, was your reliance, and did you take it to the, the level that we'd expect detrimental reliance to be taken, or we put that over on the side and feel sorry for you, because it's really a drag, but, but we look instead at rock outcroppings and subsurface conditions and contamination as your unique physical condition, but I, right?
I don't agree.
I think it's the latter, but I think the only reason why they're in this situation is because they had an as-er-right building.
Right.
With all the parking accounted for, and now they, they're not able to do that.
Right.
Their hardship didn't manifest until the interpretation of the zoning that happened after the building.
So their hardship is really the physical conditions.
Right, yes, right.
That's, try to say.
And I would say that.
It's always been there.
That's, yes.
It got triggered at the moment of the audit.
And so.
So they are wrapped up together.
No, they're not, but you have, no, one is sort of facts. The facts are, were before you because this stuff happened. But the unique physical conditions are our A finding, and you have plenty of them. No one's saying you don't have a rock outcropping that you'd have to crawl up the mountain in order to overcome, right? Just like that strange parking garage next door to you. So, so, but the question is, so I'm, I'm, I'm there on the A finding. I'm still working on the, what letters?
C finding.
The C finding of, of neighborhood character, which goes to, can we afford, in terms of neighborhood character, to reduce the parking to the level that you want, because we have testimony that is contrary to your studies?
I visited the site, and I went to the parking lot, to the right. That's the building we're talking about, the senior housing.
To the north, yeah.
Right, and I thought there were either thirteen or fourteen spaces. And when I went there, there were six spaces occupied, and I pulled into one, and I just happened to pull into the one that the man behind me wanted. It's his spot, and he forced me to get out of that spot. But when I pulled into that lot, I really thought it was a parking lot for the adjacent restaurant, because I didn't see a sign that said it was for the senior housing.
For the burger.
So, and that's, that's kind of what I want, what I want to get into here, is that, is that we have looked, in, in order to meet the C finding, we look at our project. Our project, based on our studies that we have done, will only generate demand for nine spaces. So to the extent that a project north of us, which, as I said, we have spoken to them, and they claim that their spaces go underutilized, and that has been corroborated by a member of the Board, to the extent.
Well, no, 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 that was one visit. Sorry to interrupt.
I've lived within five blocks of this spot for the past fifty years or so, so I got, I got a little perspective. There are times when that lot is absolutely full. There are times when they're not absolutely full.
There are times when that lot is.
I pass by it at seven AM in the morning sometimes, and it is, it's, it's full. I don't know why, but it can be full. So I, I think, I agree with the Chair. You're going to have to dig down a little bit deeper and take a look at the context of the neighborhood in a, sort of a more solid way, so that we can understand exactly what's happening with the parking.
It, it might be helpful to do a standard parking calculation of availability in the area, like we asked for on other cases, where you just take a survey of the available spaces and the traffic rules and regu, you know, the parking rules and regulations.
We, we did a study, the parking rules and regulations.
Yeah, and tell us what the available on-street parking is at particular points.
So that's, that is in our, in our papers.
You know, I, I'm probably overlooked.
We, we have a, a study of, within twelve-hundred feet of, of the, the development site, of the on-street parking rules and regulations, and that study has revealed that nearly every street, other than a couple of very small streets, has on-street parking available. Now, these are not.
Couple that with the times of day.
And it is coupled with.
In the morning, the afternoon, and, and evening. I don't think.
It is.
Three times of the day, do you?
I, I, I think, I, actually, we, we need to, to return to the C finding, actually. The, the, the proposed waiver will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. This isn't, this isn't about, essentially what we're going to is, if the, if the excess parking that they would be providing is useful to the neighborhood, okay. That seems to be the case evidenced by the, the neighboring property. But they are meeting their, they are showing us that they're meeting the parking that they would be generating, and no one's questioned that, right?
No, actually, I'm questioning that.
You're questioning that the generator.
That's what this is about. I'm questioning the assumption that's made in, in the Habib study about the utilization by the, by people in senior housing, and, you know, you can distinguish this, but we have an example of senior housing right next door. You could say that senior housing is different than our senior housing because of X, or actually, when it gets filled, it's because the super has a deal with the restaurant next door, and so six of those spaces are occupied by people who use the restaurant. You can distinguish that in any way, but I'm not.
Okay, that's helpful, actually. Thank you.
That's what I, that's what I've been getting at the whole time. It's that I, I, I'm not, based on the testimony, based on experience by people who actually live in this neighborhood, who are sitting on the Board, it's, it's not totally consistent, the findings of the study versus the findings, the empirical findings of people who are in this area. But like I said, you could distinguish the neighboring site, and what concerns me is your reluctance to do so. So I'm, I'm afraid that it's like, you're going to find something out, you don't want to find out.
No, it's just that, I, I'm thinking the reality of, of speaking to the, the manager of the neighboring building, when we already had a conversation with them, and.
But it wasn't a full conversation. You said three of the ten, and then people say sometimes the parking lot is full, so that's not an accurate.
I guess, I guess I'm concerned that if I go to them and I ask them for.
But it is an addict, you're, what he's saying, that he actually had a conversation with the manager of the building, or your team has had a conversation, and has gotten what I would assume to be what the manager feels is an accurate representation of what's going on in the parking lot, and you're weighing it against anecdotal evidence from two people in the audience who, no doubt, have probably seen that there are quite a few of those spaces taken. However, it is anecdotal. There's no survey backup for this.
Okay, but so there maybe should be a survey backup.
Right, but, but it's being weighed against somebody who has reasonable knowledge about the operation of their own parking lot. And so I'm not exactly giving weight to the anecd. And so I'm not exactly giving weight to the anecdotal evidence and giving it the same amount of weight as what the manager of the building is stating is the case there. Now, there is a member of this board who lives in the neighborhood who has seen the parking lot full. There is a member of this board who lives in this neighborhood who has seen that parking lot one-third full. And that is me. I am also a member of this neighborhood. I'm a member of this neighborhood who also has a dog, who uses the parking lot in Van Cortlandt Park. And on the weekend, it is difficult to find a spot. On the weekdays, you can basically sit there and sleep in your car all day because there are many spots available. So yes, that's a quarter of a mile from, from that building, but it isn't a very long walk. It's along a park. It's very nice. So we're talking about anecdotal evidence given by the members of the community.
No, okay, no, I think what we should be doing is looking at how parking in this facility is actually used, which Habib's report actually did do, but I think it needs to be homedown more. So if we, if we talk about who lives in the building and what the age range is of the building, and if it's from, if it's people who are 62 up to something, there's a something level at which they won't drive, but in the, in the 62 to that something, they will drive. So does the, does this housing developer have statistics on, on people who are living in their developments in this area, not in Brooklyn, in this area, where people tend to have cars and do drive?
I don't have cars.
Right? And then, then there's also the times when they are using it. So if during the day, Van Cortlandt Park is empty, and the times what they, where they would be using the parking is actually also during the day. I mean, I think you need to go into more depth about this, and the reason is because we have a lot of people who have written about this project. There are a lot of people who took time away from work to come here and testify, and we have to be responsive to their concerns.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
It's, what kind of financing is being provided by HPD? Is it the SAR program? Is it through the SAR program?
So I'm going to introduce Evelyn Wolf. She's, she's on our...
The reason I'm asking this, I just want to know what is the income target that is being proposed for the senior housing?
That's exactly what I wanted to address. This is not a SAR program. This was done as a tax-exempt bond financing with low-income housing tax credits. The maximum income, these are all studio apartments, the maximum income for any potential resident, eligible resident, is $34,000 a year. I think it's arguable that somebody on $34,000 a year can afford to keep a car and maintain a car in addition to their expenses for rent, food, healthcare, and a number of other things. Secondly, although the minimum, the minimum age is 62, in fact, most senior buildings, most affordable senior buildings in the city of New York are occupied by people who are significantly older than that. We own seven buildings in the city, and our average age in our buildings with over 1,000 units is 76. So to assume that these are 62-year-olds who are going to be moving in here and are going to be driving around, I think is not a good assumption. And I'd like to get back to the point that Mr. Singer made, and that is that the parking requirements are there to be used for the tenants. We're not providing parking for relatives, for caregivers, for other people. The rules of using tax-exempt bonds and using tax, low-income tax credits require that the parking is there for the residents.
But the zoning resolution is for the residents and their guests. That's what regulates the amount of parking, right? So if somebody comes to visit you, the whole idea is...
Obviously, yes. And generally, there is plenty of space in most lots for visitors and people who are coming to visit. It's just that, I just wanted to reiterate the technical, the technical point that the parking is for the tenants.
Okay, thank you. And so, Mr. Stark, with respect to this, that, that's kind of what we're getting at. So the, the fact of who the occupants really, who they really are here, as opposed to just saying seniors, what their income rate is, what their ages are, that people in that age range, what percentage of them drive, and, and, but again, I do think it's relevant to look at other senior housing complexes in, if they have the same profile. Because maybe the one next door doesn't. Maybe that one costs a lot of money and people join in, and, you know, it's a completely different demographic, right?
Yeah.
So what you're looking at is one that's got a similar demographic, and that's why, again, if the neighbor doesn't have the same demographic, then it is distinguishable, and you could say the reason that lot is full is because of the following.
Right. And I know she just, Norville just told me that they, they aren't able to look at the age range of the people who are utilizing the spaces at the site north of us, but she can give us a little information as to how, again, those, those studies by, by Philip Habib and the studies by city planning were conducted to give you a better understanding of, of the types of users of these spaces.
Yes, I just wanted to touch on and address some of the comments from the public and also from you today. So regarding your comment that we should be looking at rates that are representative of the type of users that would be in this building, that's really what we tried to do by using this city planning, city planning data. It is data on auto ownership rates for similarly multi-unit buildings like this project, similarly affordable housing developments like this project, similarly senior housing development like this project, and similarly more than a half-mile from transit. Just also to respond to some of the other questions about the parking utilization surveys that we did. So we did look at the overnight period because, as I mentioned before, the overnight period for a residential neighborhood is when demand, demand is the highest. And that, during that survey, we found that there was about 100, 199 available spaces within a quarter-mile of the site. Then lastly, there were some questions about the density and whether the, using a rate that's citywide could be applicable in this more residential neighborhood and the smaller-scale neighborhood. I think that that's really actually key to point out, because building typology has a big influence on auto ownership rates. Typically, multi-unit buildings have much lower auto ownership rates than one- and two-family houses. This census tract that the site is located in, 82% of the residential buildings are just one- and two-family houses, which would have that higher auto ownership rate that currently typifies that type of building, but not this type of building. Also, the median household income for the neighborhood is about 90% AMI for a family of two, so on a higher income range. And then also, only less than 20% of the population in the census tract is over 65. So again, it's not representative of the type of people that are going to be residing in this unit.
Thank you, Norville. And just, again, I want to mention that our papers did speak to the seven other facilities that are operated by, by the affiliate of the applicant, which house over 1,000 seniors in an affordable housing context. And the parking surveys for these projects, which are out, generally outside the transit zone, have shown that these spaces are vastly underutilized. And, you know, our, the affiliate of the applicant is, you know, just one affordable housing, senior affordable housing developer in the city. I again point to the studies of the, of the city in, in the context of their, of their zoning changes, and, and they have shown that for these types of buildings, these multifamily buildings, the auto ownership rates are extremely low. And we have studied what would be required for our property, and, and we will meet our demand with our 11 spaces, and then a couple. And so I, you know, I'm sympathetic to looking at this neighboring building, but Broadway up in Riverdale is actually quite unique. This is the only little strip of high-density zoning in the surrounding area. To have us look at neighboring NPREs, there might only be a handful of NPREs within the surrounding area, notwithstanding the one immediately to the north of us. So again, to look at some neighboring buildings, you know, we can, may or may not be able to get in contact with some, some managers, I just think it's important to realize that, you know, we're the, we're the new guy in town. We're building our building right in front of, of a bus stop, and we have been shown that we are not going to generate demand that is greater than what we're going to be providing.
Okay. But still, you have your neighboring building, so do look at your neighboring building, right? Don't say, we already asked them, because you didn't get enough data from them, okay?
Is that a low-income?
Yes, that's an NPRE, nonprofit residential.
Right, okay. So it's a similar, as far as we know, because you haven't told us otherwise, it's a similar unit. So it's a great model, the ultimate model, for a need in this particular neighborhood for cars. Unless you say, no, everybody who lives there is between 62 and 72, in which case, everybody has a car, or whatever. They get subsidies to have a car, or, you know, I don't know, whatever. Something that distinguishes it or doesn't distinguish it.
Okay, you know, we'd be...
And to use as a model, all right? I think we're...
Yeah, we were happy to get the information and submit it by writing, but, you know, we would make a request to the board to potentially close the hearing.
We can't close the hearing. We still have more information to get, okay? So provide this for us, and then we'll come back to the next hearing. You need to establish this finding. We're still struggling with this. So you need to establish it. To our satisfaction, we can close. It's a possible, you know, vote after that, but it's, you have to establish that for us, yeah?
I have a question. When does the construction loan convert to permanent loan on this project? What's the timeline on that one?
Sorry, say it again.
When does the construction loan for the low-income housing, I mean, when does that convert to permanent loan? What's the timeline on that?
It'll, it'll convert within six to nine months after full occupancy of the project, so...
And when do you plan to start the occupancy period? What's the...
In April.
April of this year?
April of this year?
Yes.
You'll start occupancy?
Yes.
Okay. But this, this isn't delaying your TCO or anything like that? What, I don't understand what's actually happening in terms of this.
Well, it, it is delaying our TCO. We, in order to, to get a TCO, we're going to have to install the stackers and be running in, in the red. This, that's, as our, as our papers demonstrate, you know, to get a TCO, you have to meet the zoning resolution. So for us to meet the zoning resolution, notwithstanding the approval of this application, we would have to install the stacker systems and, and then dip into our, continually dip into our project reserves until...
So in terms of the, where the building is, in terms, I think actually the representative for the developer should speak to this, because you know better about your, the status of your project?
No, no.
No, actually, right here.
We actually have our onsite construction...
No, 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 just somebody who's managing the project. Okay, so the question is, where is the project in terms of, of sign-offs? Like, is everything else, has everything been signed off? Where is the project?
We are in the final stages of getting the inspections done, so that we can proceed to get a TCO.
When does the marketing start?
The marketing is already started.
Okay.
We have asked, applications are due the end of this month, and depending on...
End of February?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what does that mean in terms of what you would normally do for rent-up?
Meaning?
Normally, so the applications...
The applications are due in the end of this month.
The end of February.
Then we have to go through the applications to determine eligibility. And then we have to go through interviewing, we do home visits, we have to do background checks, criminal checks, all the things that you have to do. And we expect to move the first tenants in sometime in April.
Okay. So then, if you could respond to these questions really quickly, assuming that you can make a precise answer...
I believe there's only one question, and that, unless I'm dishearing you. And I can, I will endeavor to get the answer to that question for you before the week is out.
Okay, it might, okay. I'm not sure if you can do that.
I think the next hearing's on the 7th, am I correct?
The 8th. No, that's too, we can't do that. You won't be able to respond, I don't think, in time for that. How about the 22nd of March? And you respond...
We could, I mean, we could respond in...
Yeah, I'm going to get, hold in them hopefully tomorrow. I mean, I don't know if she's...
But do that.
I can't say that I'll get it tomorrow, but I will endeavor to get it...
The call what?
Correct.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I have this going. I don't know if it's been scheduled. My business. Yeah. No, I think the, the better is we put it on for the 22nd, for a continued hearing. And like I said, if you give us the materials that are satisfactory, we can close and vote, okay? So then you submit on March 9th, March 9th, for continuation on the 22nd of March.
That, on one hand, sounds agreeable, but is, does the board members, do you traditionally need two weeks to review any submission?
Yes, we usually ask for three weeks.
So we're, we're too close to go for the 7th?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
There's no hearing between the 22nd and the 15th.
No, sorry, there's no hearing on the 15th. That's the point, right.
We would also ask that, we still were set on the 22nd.
Yeah.
That, that any community, you know, who want, people who want to submit, submit at least no less than a week ahead of that, so that we can just...
Have time to review.
Yeah, the commissioners have to review it.
Okay. If you have questions, please speak to Tony, who's sitting at the very far end after, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for February 23rd, 2016. Mike Swol, please.